There we go. You're live now.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, and I will call to order the Board of Selectmen meeting of February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. The time is seven oh one P. M. I've got an opening statement to read as usual. This open meeting of the Northborough Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with the July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two act relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the Northborough Board of Selectmen are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows the Northborough Board of Selectmen to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link posted on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure participation unless participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. I'll now go around the virtual room and confirm that board members and then staff can can be heard and hear us. Let's see, just in the order in which I see people on my screen. Scott Rogers?
Present.
Kristin Wickstead?
Here.
Jason Perro?
Present.
Julianne Hirsch?
Here.
Also with us, Town Administrator John Kader.
Present.
Fire Chief Dave Parenti.
Present.
Assistant Town Administrator Becca Meekins.
Present.
DPW Director Scott Charpentier.
Present.
And Police Chief Bill Laver. I couldn't hear you, Bill.
Present.
Excellent. Thank you very much, sir. And we also have Northborough Cable with us, providing cable access for the evening. Let's get started. First item on our agenda as always is public comment. If there are any members of the public who wish to comment on anything that is particularly not on our agenda, you're welcome to raise your hand. Um, and I see one hand up. Whoop, and the hand went away. And all right, I'm just gonna wait for a second because I see hands coming and going. I'm gonna give it just a moment. All right. Lisa Misselli, I'm bringing you in. Hi, Lisa.
Good evening. Hi, Mitch and and board members. You always throw me a curve ball when you make a when you finish your statement, uh, because I was reading after reading the agenda today and my comment was about the agenda. So I think I'm going to keep with it only because I couldn't think of something else off the agenda right now. Um, so thank you for bearing with me. Uh, my comment tonight is to express my interest in having a professional interim administrator facilitate the work of that office and a townwide discussion of how the citizens want to direct their future visions and goals. I think that would be very helpful and I'd love to see something like that happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for input. Okay, I see no other hands raised, so we'll move along to the agenda. And first item on our agenda is approval of the set of meeting minutes for January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. Would someone like to make a motion or have any discussion on that? Kristen is speaking, however, is muted. These things happen.
Yes, um, I can make a motion.
Sure, go ahead.
I move the board vote to approve the January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three minute meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made by Kristen, seconded by Julianne. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Uh, let's see, Julianne?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Meeting minutes are approved. Thank you very much. Next up, we have discussion of draft legislative priorities. John, do you want to lead us through the beginning?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Thank you. Um, so you know, every year we send out to all of our boards and committees, all of our departments, uh, a request to, uh, for information if they are interested in identifying any issues or priorities that might be going to the state legislature that may impact the town of Northborough. We ask for their input. Um, we then try to boil it down to a few, you know, half a dozen or so talking points, uh, the more most important ones, of course, and then there's usually a few pieces of legislation that we're tracking that we want to make sure that our delegation is aware of. Uh, so we we do this sort of funnel process. We bring everything together. We compile it. Uh, we put a draft together. The board reviews it, signs off on it, and then we invite the delegation in, uh, to it'll be our first meeting in March where they'd come in, we'd send them the letter ahead of time, and it helps to frame up the discussion about the priorities of Northborough and what we're seeking from our legislative delegation. So, you know, we have multiple representatives, uh, Senator, and so it's important that the that the board sort of frame up that discussion. So in your packet, uh, tonight, and again, the the, uh, board's packet is available on the website if anybody'd like to pull, open it up and follow along. Uh, we've hit on the the key things that, uh, we're hoping to have discussions regarding with our delegation. Um, what we'll do between now and your next meeting is to flush this out in the more standard format. We try to put numbers to things if we want a statewide initiative for additional funding. We try to hit the state number, but we bring it home to what it means for Northborough. Um, so just kind of going through the, uh, summary that we've provided to you in your packet. Um, are one of our top priorities has been, uh, for the last several years, uh, an increase in chapter ninety transportation funds. This is a bond bill issued by the state, uh, that sends money to all the municipalities based on a formula, and they can use that money to fix their roadways, do drainage projects and sidewalks. Um, we've been asking that the state increase that from the two hundred million, uh, to a level of three hundred million. This was a top priority of the Mass Municipal Association at the annual conference. Unfortunately, the Healy Driscoll administration filed a four hundred million dollar chapter ninety bond bill over two years. So basically, the two hundred thousand. The difference is at two hundred, I'm sorry, two hundred million. At two hundred million, Northborough gets about a half, about five hundred thousand dollars. At three hundred million, we would get closer to eight. That three hundred thousand would go a long way to closing the gap between, uh, our roadway and increase our overall, our investment in our roads and our payment condition index would be on a higher, um, uh, a steeper improvement, um, trend. The other thing is we've identified significant sidewalk and complete street projects and, you know, that funding would go a long way. Unfortunately, uh, again, the the, uh, governor's office does not seem inclined to increase that, but it is a top priority of the town. Uh, when you look at the things that we receive in terms of requests from our residents, it's, you know, walkability, roadways, drainage, uh, these are things that people are are very much in favor of seeing, uh, increased. We have to spend about one point one million dollars a year to maintain our current, uh, pavement condition index. This is for just our roadways. Uh, we need additional money if we're going to make more headway with regard to sidewalk improvements or enhancements, um, and as well as uh, just drainage issues in general. So that has been identified as a continuing top priority of the town. The next is chapter seventy. This is our, uh, our state, um, our state aid. When you look at, you know, what the town receives in state aid, about seventy, seventy-five percent of that is chapter ninety education aid. Unfortunately, uh, with the Student Opportunity Act that's been approved and implemented by the legislature, the vast majority of any new revenues that they receive are being diverted to, uh, to districts in need. Uh, for better or for worse, Northborough is a minimum maid community. We get thirty dollars per student. Um, we we don't have a significant population in need. So we aren't going to see much in the way of that increase, but one of the things we have asked for is that that minimum maid of thirty dollars per student, we've asked that that be one hundred, which is also the position of the Mass Municipal Association. Uh, the third, uh, major category is the special education circuit breaker and regional transportation reimbursements. These are, uh, very important funding sources, although they don't flow through the budget. This is aid that comes directly to the school department. Uh, the regional transportation goes directly to the high school. And, uh, just for those of you that haven't been around long, you know, when communities formed a regional school, they were enticed to do that because the legislature promised to pick up the tab for transportation. They've never fully honored that. So it's always been less than a hundred percent and it moves around, but it is critical because if the state doesn't fund transportation at the high school level, it just means, uh, whatever shortfall they leave the high school with, it just comes to each Southborough and Northborough in the form of a higher assessment. Um, and obviously, circuit breaker is critical. I think you're gonna hear, um, something very unique from the superintendent this year with regard to the especially the K two eight school budget. Um, they are not coming in at the target figure of three and a half. Right now, they're at four point nine percent, and I don't think they're gonna get much below that. And, um, increases in special education is one of the major driving forces behind that. So again, as you see, year to year, unexpected special education costs, that special education circuit breaker program is supposed to soften the blow and smooth it out. And again, we want to make sure that they know that full funding of that program is a priority for Northborough. And then the last main category is, uh, what we refer to as UGA or unrestricted general government aid. Um, for those of you again who have been around for a long time, that's lottery money that's ours that the legislature calls something different, so they don't have to address the fact that typically during a recession, they steal that money for their own needs and, uh, historically they've done that. But unrestricted general government aid is, uh, is mostly lottery proceeds, which were passed to benefit, uh, general government and schools, uh, at the local level. So, uh, we want to make sure we've had a really good history with the Baker administration of matching, uh, increases in unrestricted general government aid. It's about twenty-five percent of our of our state aid comes in this form, but that that matching in general what the increases are in state revenues. And the next item on the agenda, I'll get into that a little bit more because they've had their revenue consensus hearing and they have agreement on what they think revenues at the state level are going to increase. Our point is, in terms of sharing, uh, we want to make sure that if the state, whatever the state aid is going up, that our local unrestricted general government aid goes up a comparable amount. It's the priority of the MMA. Uh, we hope that the Healy Driscoll administration will honor the, um, informal agreement. There's nothing, uh, that's been laid out in terms of formal, uh, there's no law or policy, but that's yet been the general practice under the Baker administration. It's one that we advocated for under the Patrick administration, and so we want to see that continue. So it's going to be important to emphasize that. Those are the big categories that we want to make sure that the legis our legislative delegation knows those programs have a huge impact on our level of service and the level of taxes in Northborough, and we want to make sure that they honor the programs they've committed to and that they understand the importance of the ones that we're asking them to elevate maybe to a higher level like the chapter ninety. And it's important to show them in real terms specifically what the impacts on Northborough will be. And in the final letter, we put numbers to those things to show. So beyond that, we try to then focus on a couple of big, uh, items that are coming through that are really important to us. Number, uh, number one, we spent a lot of time at the MMA conference at the annual meeting speaking about this. I personally advocated for it through the Fiscal Policy Committee, and that is to create a municipal public, uh, public safety or public building authority. Uh, so there's a bill that's making its way through the legislature that's trying to create a program similar to the Massachusetts School Building Authority or the Library Trustees Program, where the state offers grants for large building projects. So I always say it's ironic that, uh, you can get a state grant to help you build a library, but you can't get one to build a fire station or a police station or a town hall building. Clearly, the issue here is making sure that there is, uh, a dedicated funding source. Absent that, it's a tough sell. Um, but this is one that we've talked about. Um, we were hopeful that maybe at least even on a temporary basis, given some of the supply chain issues and the escalation of costs, that they might use some of the state ARPA funding to to, uh, do a, uh, a project or a, a temporary bill or program that would help, uh, communities like Northborough that is going to be entering the market at a point when we we're seeing a lot of volatility. So, but we'd like to see that as a permanent program moving forward. Uh, the second, um, of the secondary priorities is a a permanent option for remote public meetings. As you know, uh, this has been very, uh, very well received by the residents to allow public participation through remote meetings. Um, so, uh, there are bills that would allow that to become a permanent option, uh, for remote meetings and participation. And, um, uh, we're cautiously optimistic that that's one has a lot of support from from everybody and will and will be enacted. Um, the next one is, uh, one that we've tried to work through the Mass Municipal Association. Um, we're trying to update the, uh, procurement laws. Strange, uh, we have very elaborate procurement laws, but, uh, through some sort of a fluke of a process, the legislature changed the rules for procurement laws. They're different for K two eight for school systems than they are for the town government now. And so what we've asked is that those two, that those two different standards be one and the same. Uh, it makes no sense why they would do that, but it would close a loophole essentially that allows, uh, using a request for proposals, um, or qualification-based selection for purchases between ten thousand and a hundred thousand. So they changed their rules for the schools, but they're they're still holding us to the old standards. This one, in my opinion, should be a no-brainer, but we need to draw their attention to why this is important. And the last of the secondary, uh, priorities is the, uh, streaming entertainment, the, uh, entertainment operators use of public way. This is essentially, uh, a bill that seeks to level the playing field for companies that are no longer, uh, you know, they're not cable companies, but they're basically using those rights of way and those wires to stream, uh, services like Netflix, clicks and Hulu and Disney and all those. Um, what we're seeing over, uh, the years is that the traditional cable service is people are cutting the cord, they're going more to the streaming services, but the way our local access is funded is through the cable franchise fees. And what we did, we had a little bit of a conversation when we renewed the Verizon, uh, license, is that they're technically not a cable company, right? Uh, so it's all becoming a little murkier, uh, but one of the things that we're looking to, uh, bolster is that, uh, to get a clear dedicated funding source to continue to pay for local access, because as this, um, as this moves forward, you know, we're seeing more people cutting the cord, the revenue source is becoming more tenuous and, uh, and it's going to be more difficult to maintain, you know, local access, uh, or across all municipalities. So that's a bill that we're advocating, uh, support for. So those are the primary and secondary, um, uh, priorities that we've identified that have come up through the departments and the boards and committees. Uh, what we're looking for is is, uh, any feedback from the board of any additional priorities or anything else they'd like modified. Um, if not, we will put together the standard letter. You can approve it at your next meeting, and then we will send it out to the delegation and they will be at your first meeting in March. I think it's really important, uh, this is going to be a new process for, uh, for a new rep and a new senator. Uh, Megan Killcoin's been through this, you know, at least once or so with, uh, once or twice with the town, but it's going to be really important that as a community, we speak with one voice about what the priorities are for the Northborough community. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and, uh, we have provided, you know, uh, you know, the past letters, so you can see on the town administrator's website is our current legislative priorities, so people can see the format of letter and the and the focus on that. What we want to try to do is just not throw, uh, a hundred things. Uh, there's a limited amount of time for them to come in and speak with us. We really want to focus on the the most important, uh, priority and secondary priority items for us. So. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Sure. Any questions or input from members of the board? Scott? Then Julianne?
Yeah. Yeah, thanks, John, and for putting that together and just wanted, you know, echo and emphasize, uh, we we see the critical need on those chapter ninety funds, right? Almost everything we're looking at from a capital perspective and the projects we need and backlogs and and things that we forecast in the upcoming years. That's just gotta be the number one priority to get that fully funded because almost everything that we want to do from downtown revitalization to sidewalks to roadways to complete streets. That's, that would be the best funding source for those efforts if they came to us through those additional, through those channels.
And it would certainly take a lot of pressure off of the capital improvement plan. Right now, we are trying to, we're using one-time revenues to kind of float that, the level that we need to be investing. And we've, and through additional work by the DBW director, we've identified, you know, two point one million and existing sidewalks, as you mentioned, and then we've got twenty-five, uh, prioritized projects that were approved by the board back in December through the Complete Streets program, and that's three point five to four point five million dollars of additional, um, projects. So chapter ninety is just, uh, a absolutely pri absolute priority for us as it is for most towns.
Julianne?
So, um, I'd like my fellow selectmen's opinion on this, but I, I would like, I think it would be important to let the legislators know that e-commerce is changing a lot of our quality of life in Northborough and a lot of other towns. Um, and even as we use the the highways and and roads in Massachusetts. So if there's anything they can do to require or add more rest stops for truckers or things that will, um, help us like, you know, control this so that it doesn't get so so that we feel like we're coexisting with e-commerce better.
Julianne, did you have any specific legislative priority to go with that? I I don't have a problem with.
I couldn't find any bills that are, um, I, there are some studies that have been done by, um, by the, uh, uh, metropolitan group in the Boston area pointing out how idling trucks is affecting air quality. Trucks in the Boston area, there's a lot of problems, it seems, with deliveries, trucks just parking anywhere. But, you know, I, we've, we've had, we've had concerns here and not that, you know, everything doesn't necessarily have to be a specific bill, but if, you know, if they're hearing from other legislators that this is a problem in in towns, um, I'd just like them to be aware that that in Northborough, we feel that this is something that they might be able to help us with. But I welcome everybody else's opinion on that.
Yeah, I, if we're not familiar, i- if you're not familiar with bills particularly to recommend, um, not that I disagree with the intent of some help dealing with the the just the changing traffic patterns that we've experienced here, maybe that's a just a discussion item to occur with the legislators when we meet with them and, uh, sort of ask them to keep an eye out for, um, for bills and and other ways that they might be able to help us with that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Kristen? Uh, you are muted. Sorry, this is your second warning.
Yeah, I know. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have three strikes and I'm out tonight, man. Um, so I was actually just, um, thinking about this earlier this evening and how and I I didn't think of it under the um, agenda item of legislative priorities, probably because it's not a specific bill, but it is something I would like to talk about with our local, um, representatives because, um, having such a larger number of trucks on the roads, and we are not the only town dealing with this, and I do feel like it's a state issue that at some point they are gonna have to put together a bill. So, um, to address traffic and safety with large trucks on small roads and small neighborhoods or that kind of thing. Um, so I'm not really sure what it would look like, and I don't know what other towns are doing. Um, but I I would welcome a discussion about it.
Jason?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, yeah, I I think I just want to go back to the chair's statement essentially that in in phrasing, having this discussion with our legislative representatives, we are trying to focus on very specific initiatives that we would like them to support, and those initiatives are very, you know, fairly, uh, well-defined in terms of exactly what action we would like them to take and what the, uh, you know, finances are with respect to those actions. Um, so I I I certainly understand and appreciate the concern, wanting to have broader discussions, but I think, uh, you know, for the purpose of this particular conversation and the particular priorities we're trying to, uh, convey, uh, there are specific things that, uh, that we're trying to emphasize and trying to have them focus on, uh, in the legislative activities that they're going to be engaging in over the next year and trying to muster critical support for some of those initiatives, not only for Northborough's benefit, but these, many of these are for the benefit of many communities, uh, regional districts, uh, whatever. Uh, hopefully, they have broad appeal and they enjoy broad support from the legislative, uh, representation across a number of communities in addition to Northborough. Uh, so I get, uh, I understand wanting to have the conversation with our legislative representatives about, uh, that particular concern, but, uh, uh, I do not want to, uh, detract from the specific things that they can advocate for and take action on, uh, in this legislative session. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Um, yeah, adding a little bit to my earlier comment, I think it's reasonable to mention some of these things during the verbal discussion. Just because there isn't a bill to take action on this session yet doesn't mean that we can't advocate for such a bill, or whether it be this session or some future session. Um, I I think it's important for the legislators to hear the the concerns of the board, perhaps that aren't yet being addressed by the legislature. Um, I want to mention a couple of the items that, uh, John, that you were, uh, you included in your your secondary section. Um, one is the, uh, permanent option for remote meetings. I completely agree. I think that's that's critical and important. It almost happened last session, but fell apart at the last second. Um, the one thing I would very much like to add to that is, uh, mention of hybrid meetings. I think that's the way future in the future for municipal meetings. The Senate did approve a bill, um, for, uh, that included, uh, some some detailed requirements for hybrid meetings, which I thought was very, very good. It did not, that bill did not provide any funding, but there was a parallel bill that would have provided funding in a broad sense for the same purpose. Uh, if they can put that together and get the House on board, I think, um, that's even better than a permanent remote option. Um, but certainly at minimum, the remote option needs to be continued and made permanent. I I think that'll happen.
Yeah, I
Sorry. Sorry, go ahead.
No, I didn't wait to be recognized. I was, I I agree with that in that, you know, we were hopeful, we saw the the legislature taking this up and putting some money towards it, which, you know, for small communities like us would be very helpful. So, you know, like everything, we're hoping, uh, we're hoping that, you know, that comes back around and that they put put a little bit of money towards that. Again, that would be a good use of their ARPA funds, I think.
Sure. And also, um, I'm strongly supportive of, uh, of finding new ways for funding for the cable department. Um, that's a very important department in town that has become even more department, more important over the last few years through COVID and everything else. The demands on them have increased while their funding has decreased because of the, um, the cutting of the cord and the way that is funded. I know there are a couple of different ideas floating around, both at the state and federal level and as far as ways to improve that month match. Um, one is the, uh, the mechanism that you outline in the letter, John, and another is to, um, to move that, uh, that franchise fee type arrangement onto, uh, onto the internet bill, so it's still the wire going into your home, um, as opposed to the service. Uh, doesn't really matter to me. I think there are pros and cons with either approach, but I I hope that they can act on that, uh, before too long because at some point there will be a a breaking point for public access stations and, um, we'll be asked to make a decision as to whether we want to continue such a department at all. Um, and if so, we would have to fund it with tax dollars, which generally haven't been, uh, supporting that department in Northborough or most other communities. Um, other than that, I had no items to add or or comments on the items. I completely agree. I look forward to the, um, to the discussion with our legislatures one month from today.
Okay, so based on that, we'll
Nothing else.
The draft together for you, uh, to sign off on at your next meeting, and then, uh, so if there's anything else specific, you know, please get it to to me as soon as you can. Um, and, uh, so we'll get the letter out, approve that your next meeting and out. They're all just, the good news is they're all locked up for your first meeting in March, so they will all confirm that they're coming in, uh, to the meeting. So, so we'll look forward to to having them.
Thank you. Great. Thank you. Um, next on our agenda is an update on state aid. John, you gave us a little bit of a hint earlier.
Yeah, so just, uh, briefly, uh, Yeah, so just uh briefly, uh just uh in in a typical year, um. The state has what's called a revenue consensus hearing, and this is where the administration, the legislature, the Department of Revenue. Uh as well as outside economists, uh Moody's Analytics. Uh which is the um which is the hired arm of Department of Revenue. Uh to do an analysis, the Mass Taxpayers Foundation comes in and basically they all meet. And they go through, what do we think is going to happen to the Massachusetts economy in the upcoming year? This is called the Revenue Consensus Hearing. The point of this exercise. Uh is to get consensus on how much revenues will go up at the state level, so they can begin putting their budgets together. So that normally happens in uh mid-December. Unfortunately, because of the change over in the administration, that Revenue Consensus Hearing did not happen until January twenty fourth. I actually attended it or and and watched the entire uh procedure, uh process and discussion of all the presenters. Um, the other thing that's unique this year is uh normally the governor. Has to provide their uh his or her budget by the third week in January. That's our, you know, that's why the Revenue Consensus Hearing takes place in mid-December. Governor's budget has to come out by the third week, a third Wednesday, I believe, in uh in January. And that's our first look at what state aid might look like for the town of Northborough. This year, because of the change in administration, the Revenue Consensus Hearing took place January twenty fourth, so around when normally we would see the first look at the state budget. And the governor has until uh March first to submit her budget. So we still don't have a look at that, but what I can update you on is what transpired at the uh at the hearing. Um, I'll cut to the chase. Um, the uh legislature and the administration have agreed. On uh and and announced that the tax collection are expected to grow one point six percent in twenty twenty four. So. What was interesting is when you heard the Department of Rev- typically the mass taxpayer is always the most pessimistic, you know, zero to negative one, right? Uh then you have some private um economists, uh Moody's Analytics, uh and they range between, you know, uh. You know, two to six percent. Um, but the bottom line is that the uh the legislature and the administration is gonna pick. A reasonably conservative number to start with. Uh which is why, as the process moves forward, you know, the governor's budget is our first look at state aid. Uh and then the the House and then the Senate. And they'll have another quarter of revenues to look at, and sometimes you'll see that these numbers get adjusted again. But as of right now, uh sitting here today, the Revenue Consensus uh growth factor is one point six percent. So. Not a big number. Now, historically, the town of Northborough, even when that number was significantly higher. The town of Northborough generally only sees about one to one and a half percent increase in state aid on an annual basis. And that again is because the majority of state aid is distributed through the Education Chapter Seventy formula. And the majority increases go to districts in need, and we are not one of those districts in need, so we're a minimum aid community. So I would anticipate, uh as I mentioned back in December. Our budget model is uh that we 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 are counting on one percent. In additional state aid. This is problematic for us, because as of right now, you know, budgets are going up. Three and a half to the school budget right now, K to eight is going up almost five percent. Um, as our state aid languishes behind the increases in the budget, it becomes a smaller and smaller revenue source. Which means it's just made up by by local taxes, so. Um, so sitting here today, the state is only estimating one point six percent. I'm telling you that we'll be lucky to see, you know, one, one and a half percent at most. So the assumptions uh and the budget model that we have, I think, is a a solid one. Um, one thing that the Mass Municipal Association keeps arguing, they argued in fiscal twenty twenty three. And they're arguing again here is that um what happens is the state changes the benchmark, so they modify. So they assume revenue is gonna go up a certain amount. When they get more data that shows revenues going up more, they increase that. But what we're arguing is you need to make sure that you're basing the percentage increase. Particularly for the unrestricted aid that we talked about a few moments ago. And it's based on the estimate, not the modified estimates, because they keep raising the estimates. Then the percentage increase for the next year, you know, gets smaller and smaller. So right now, the MMA, and this on page two of the handout I gave you on this. Um, the MMA's recommended calculation shows that the consensus revenue forecast for fiscal twenty twenty four. Is uh two point one percent above the base that state leaders originally used to enact the fiscal twenty-three spending levels last July. So the state saying one point six percent, the MMA is arguing for two point one percent. At the end of the day, guys, Northborough isn't gonna see much more than one percent, so. Again, just giving you an update on where things stand, we we look forward to receiving the governor's. Uh budget and assumes we do, we'll convey that information to you. If the piece that we always wanna watch, and I always give you a caveat on is state aid, there's two components. One is how much additional aid that we're gonna get from state, from the state. The other is the state charges us for certain things. Uh they charge us for mosquito control, they charge us for being adjacent to an MBA MBTA station. Uh they charge us for all sorts of things, uh charter school um reimbursements. So. State aid goes up, and then we have to look at on a relative basis how much those assessments goes up. The net of those two historically is about one percent for us and has been for the last, you know. Five, six plus years, so. That's where we are. Um, that's the update. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I always find it interesting to listen to economists because. You know, they they have a a a bunch of caveats. And none of them agree on anything, so um. But the one thing, one positive thing I did take out of this that I would relay, when we did, when they went through this process last year. Lots and lots and lots of talk about recessionary headwinds. That this that aspect receded considerably. But the one thing that everybody did say is we saw a big bounce, you know, after after the economy came back. From vaccinations and everything opening back up and all that getting caught up. What they all cautioned against was, don't expect that those big increases that they saw last year. And a little bit of of this year, that and and everybody's opinion was that's going to level out, and we're gonna see more modest increases. For the foreseeable future. So no big permanent swing upwards. And then, of course, they all said, and of course, you know, there can always be a recession too, so um but. By and large, it was positive for modest increases. At least in the upcoming fiscal year and the next couple is how they they couched it. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, John. Any uh questions, members of the board? Julian.
Um, John, are these modest increases, did does that include the the new tax we have on? Million dollar incomes and above? That what it did, was there discussion about where that money's going or?
No, it was more uh their 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 discussion is more general overall economic growth. And what the uh the key revenue sources of which income tax. Income taxes make up, I think, about fifty-seven percent of the state budget. There's income tax, capital gains. And then you have, you know, uh uh sales tax. Those are their main sources. And so um they didn't specifically get into. It's it's factored into overall what the revenue is gonna go up, but they didn't get into specifically, Julianne, what. You know, if they're going, how they're gonna carve that money out or how that might be used, so.
Thanks.
Again, in general, in general, the vast majority of increases in state aid is being funneled through the Student Opportunity Act. Going to school districts in need. That's just, that's just what's happened for the last several years.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, next on our agenda, we have discussion and potential votes on American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA grant spending for. Proctor School Roof Fire Engine Replacement and DPW Tight Tank Compliance Project. Um, I'm gonna suggest that um a a sort of a way of thinking through this item. Because we've got three separate items in uh in one agenda. Um. First, I think we should, we should deal with each separately. I hope no one has a problem, has any trouble with that since they're different projects. Um, and second, that we deal first with for an item, whether we think uh as a board, we support. Moving forward with that project this year, independent of funding source, and if the answer is yes. Then we discuss the funding source, and the funding source could be ARPA, it could be town meeting, because I suspect that. Um if we don't fund a project, but we want to go forward with it, it goes on the warrant, and then town meeting would. Um, would deal with it the way they would any other projects. Anyone have any any concerns with that approach? Just to keep things simple. Okay, um, first item, just going in order of the agenda is the um Proctor School Roof. Um, we received some good information, of course, in the packet. Uh, we received emails from um Superintendent Martino and a and a couple of school committee members. About that project, I suspect were reasonably educated. On that project, it's also been discussed by the board in the past. John, I don't know if there's anything additional. That.
Yeah, just.
Say about the the project specifically.
Yeah, if I if I may, a couple of key points is um, you know, when we just, when the board released thirty-eight thousand dollars. Uh of ARPA funds last year to deal with some of the immediate drainage and pooling issues to help buy us some time on that project. Um, at that point in time, uh the board had authorized the superintendent to file a statement of interest. Which gets us into the Mass School Building Authority's queue for potential funding, grant funding for approximately forty-five percent of the roof. And we were hopeful at that time that we would see some funding under that program. We've been successful in obtaining that in the past. Uh unfortunately, we did receive a letter uh in October twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-two uh MSBA saying. Your roof doesn't qualify, uh they have a lot of projects and that roof, uh unfortunately, they just look at the age of the roof. And I don't think they put as much weight on the on this the the actual status of the roof. Uh more concerning than that was immediately after that, um. Uh in the on November second, they issued a press release, this is MSBA issued a press release that said, the Accelerated Repair Program is on hold. And it's on hold because MSBA has a number of projects that were approved. Uh were out to bid or under construction, and what they were finding was supply chain issues uh and uh. Es- escalation in building costs and so forth, were putting a bunch of those projects in question. So basically, what they decided to do was they're not taking any more uh projects in the queue. Uh and they're trying to use those funds to uh bolster up the projects that have already been approved or are under construction. So what that means for the town of Northborough is we're not getting funded this cycle, and we're not getting funded next cycle. And um and the roof at this point will not hold. Until we come, until that program potentially comes back on. You assume it'll come back on in year three. Uh for us, but we don't know what what will transpire. The other issue is that we have. Um, the Z School Roof that is in the queue for uh, I wanna say it's fiscal twenty uh sis- six. If I'm not mistaken, in the capital plan, that's for two million dollars. So uh that roof will go into the queue for MSBA and is a real uh need to clear out this project. Um, because it's just not going to make it through the MSBA funding cycle because of the impacts of the pandemic, so. Um, uh that's why, if you remember in the original memo, uh going back in July fifteenth, uh that we were. At least anticipating at least fifty percent of the project being paid for are funded through a grant. That is not gonna happen. Um, the other piece of uh information uh that I would uh share with you is. We did have Sean Thompson, our facilities manager, work with a number of roofers. To go out and look at that uh roof to see if there was any way possible to extend the life on it. And short of expending hundreds of thousands of dollars to buy. Very limited amount of time, like a year or two. Um, the recommendation, very strong recommendation was that's um, that's bad money to spend. And you're better off just to move forward, get the roof buttoned up and deal with the the leaks and the issues, so. So that's the update on MSBA and that project, and that's why it's in here for uh one point seven million dollars for your consideration.
Thank you. Um, so the first topic of discussion is, do we believe that this project should be funded this year? So we can, it can go ahead. I hope no members of the board think it should not be. Um, I'll just, I'll just state that if there are any members of the board that feel like we should not replace the roof now, um let. Go ahead and and let us know and let's talk about that. Um, the roof is deteriorating. Um, I I did speak with. Uh Representative of MSBA at the MMA Conference last month, and uh uh he gave me essentially the same. Report about the uh accelerated repair programs delay, possibly even more pessimistic that it might not be. Just two years that it's on hold. Um, and we've seen the photos of what's going on with the roof and the building. I I really think as far as the project, we need to go ahead and do that. Uh are are there any members of the board that want to speak to that, either counter to what I said or or anything else about the timing? Of this project. Okay, Julian first, then Jason.
Actually, Jason had his hand up before me.
Oh, right here, sure. Go ahead, Jason.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Julian. Uh, yeah, I was just going to say, I think we have enough understanding of this project, the need, the urgency. Uh, the cost impact and uh. Uh, we've had some submissions of emails from some members of the community advocating that we proceed forward. Uh, so I'm certainly uh advocating that we proceed immediately, and that I assume that will be the sentiment of uh. Most of the board members.
Julian.
Well, I just wanted to clarify, are you asking a two-part question? Is the first part?
The I'm only, I I I have only proposed uh sort of a a statement of interest, if you will, in the first part, which is. Does the board support um getting the roof repaired this, you know, basically this summer? I mean, a school can't replace a roof while kids are in session, so um it would be a a summer project.
Okay, and then part two would be how it's funded. Okay.
Correct.
So we're on part one now.
We're on part one.
Okay.
Okay, does anyone?
I I agree with Jason.
Okay, yes. Um, so I I I hope that puts certainly the majority of the comments that we've received at. Um, at some level of rest. Um, then the next question is, how do we fund it? And the choices are basically ARPA. Or town meeting or some combination of the two. Um, I will will lead a little bit with some of my thoughts on that. Um, ARPA was provided for COVID-related costs initially. And that's how I have always looked at it. It was certainly a COVID-related funding mechanism. Uh, we're not restricted. In terms of COVID-related costs, I look at the school construction, ru- the roof construction project as something. The town was going to do anyway, it's been on the capital plan since before COVID hit. Um, I think we all agree, we need, we need to do it, so um. Initially, my thought was that it wasn't suitable for ARPA, however, the fact that MSBA. Declined to help us with that, uh with their share, which I think was gonna be around forty-two or forty-five percent of the costs. Um, that's really due to COVID, because projects got more expensive. They wanted to fund the projects that were in the queue, and they didn't want to. Uh, accept anything else, so um from my perspective, uh funding the share of. What MSBA would have covered with this out of ARPA would be, from my perspective, consistent with. Um, the way the board has has discussed ARPA in recent months, but I'm I'm absolutely happy to hear from anybody. Um. Scott, I just saw your hand. I don't know if I if I missed a hand before that. Uh, Scott, go ahead.
Yeah, I I see the logic of of what you're saying there, but I think in terms of the urgency. Um, you know, if we if we released uh some of the funding or use some of the funding through ARPA and then went to. Town meeting with the remaining funds, the overall project wouldn't be accelerated as it needs to. So I I would say that it makes, and you know, due to the urgency of this, I think a single funding source. Uh and that immediate needs allows to get all the preparation to be to be in place for, you know, potentially construction. This summer is is what's needed.
Yeah, I don't believe that town meeting funding would put that at risk. I mean, they they can't start the project until essentially. Around July first, right after school lets out. Um, so I I have not been given, I did ask the school department for a schedule to for two schedules, one with ARPA funding and one without. Um, I didn't receive a response, so I I don't believe there is any difference in funding uh expedience. John, go ahead.
Yeah, uh uh there there is some difference um in that uh the ARPA funding is available immediately, that would allow them to. Uh issue the bid, sign contracts, get everything ready sooner um to uh to get the project done. Uh, the project can be done uh while kids are in the. Uh, the project can be done, uh, while kids are in the building, but obviously the preference would be to get as much of it done in terms of noise and distraction during the summer months. So, um, but, uh, that would allow the project again, move forward with the bidding, the design bidding and, uh, documents, uh, construction, uh, contracts uh, immediately. Otherwise we would have to wait until July one.
Yeah. Yeah, I've never heard of a, a major roof project being done with kids in a school. Um, that's.
It's all the time.
Christian, did I see your hand go up or no?
Um, no, no, I don't think so. No, I mean, I definitely didn't put my hand up and then I was thinking.
I apologize.
But I, I, I think I'm okay.
Okay. Jason.
Uh, yes. In trying to split the funding sources for this project between ARPA and quote town meeting, unquote, what exactly do you mean by town meeting? What specific funding source are you referring to?
I assume at a, a level of a little under a million dollars that, um, it would be debt. Town has a, a pretty low percentage of debt right now. Um, we can talk a little bit about future debt in a moment if you'd like. But, uh, I, I would leave that up to, to John to determine the specific source of funding that he'd recommend. Um, again, as if ARPA didn't exist and MSBA covered, you know, roughly seven hundred and sixty five thousand dollars of this, what would we do? That's that question.
Well, okay, uh, that's not the circumstance we find ourselves in. We find ourselves in with ARPA money, which we have accepted as general revenue and applicable to any municipal operation that we tend to undertake. And capital program and these capital projects to some extent have been delayed in their execution and suffered from cost escalation because of uh, restraint we exercised with the budget over the pandemic years.
This, this project, I think, has always been funded, scheduled on the capital plan for, uh,
It certainly was on the timeline. That's certainly true, but I would not agree that because of that fact, we should discount the use of ARPA funding for the complete cost of the project.
My argument is based on some of the other requests and determination still to be made and some already been spoken about. Um, I'll, I'll mention that in a minute, but I want to give everyone a chance to weigh in initially. And I'll go through some of the other thoughts that I have on, on ARPA and reasons for holding on to it. Uh, Julian. I'm sorry, Jay, Jason, did you want to follow up before I moved along?
Uh, just going to respond to your comment, if, if some decision process of this specific project is in some way dependent on the disposition of the other projects, then we need to be talking about all of them, not just this one in isolation without fully understanding the impacts on the other projects.
Julian.
Yeah, I, 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 I mean, as much as we'd like to talk about each and every one individually and we have to, it, we do have to keep in mind the many requests that we received and the others on the, on the table tonight. But for me, um, I, I would like some verification on this timeline. I, um, I need to hear from the superintendent about whether or not this project would start before the children are out of school. And if it went to town meeting, how, for whatever amount, um, whether those bids and everything could be ready to go and, and we have someone in line that it, you know, the week after the children leave school. So I, I, I kind of need more verification on that timeline.
Yeah, I wish we would have received a little bit more information there. But a- a- again, generally speaking, if this was, if we didn't have this ARPA money, um, this would have I'm sure been on the April town meeting warrant and would have gotten done this summer. So I, I don't see a reason that that's at risk. They can certainly do the bids in advance um, of the funding being available. Um, and I know under at least some circumstances, um, money from town meeting can be available before July first through a ban or something else if, if that's needed. And again, if we partially fund this, the design part would easily be fundable immediately. Scott.
I guess I'm a little concerned about you individually find figuring out, you know, timelines and what's possible and what's not possible in terms of public procurement. So I'd really want town administration to weigh in and, and either confirm what you've said or, or, or whatever.
Yeah. All right, John, so it's a, it's a fair question.
So I had a conversation with superintendent today, uh, about this and, uh, releasing the funds sooner allows them to get going sooner. Uh, one of the issues is getting contractors to bid on projects. They don't like to bid on projects that aren't funded. Because there's no guarantee the project's going to move forward. They incur a lot of costs to do that. Um, but it would get them, it would get the schools to immediately, I mean, it literally, they could immediately move forward with the project to get it, to get it squared up with the goal of trying to get into as much of the actual construction done over the summer months. I believe it's a four to six week construction, uh, period. Uh, so they're confident that they'd be able to get it done. Uh, that's based on a conversation I had with the superintendent. Just if I may, uh, by way of clarification, I do want to remind folks, just in terms of the ARPA funds, when it was first approved, if you remember, there were a lot of, a lot of really strange, um, uh, strings attached and very specific buckets that it could be used for. On January sixth of last year, the final rule came out and I think it was to acknowledge the fact that it wasn't just specific projects that were impacted by the pandemic, but the general economic impacts similar to what we just talked about with MSBA. Northborough saw the same thing. Our revenues dropped off, our free cash dropped off. There were implications very significantly because we, we made a policy decision to postpone some capital projects uh, to give ourselves a little bit more liquidity to deal with, uh, whatever issues might come up, uh, in terms of the pandemic. Um, but as budgets get tighter, uh, and, uh, the economy is recovering, you know, there's been implications and we, we have clearly have capital, uh, projects that are, are bunching up on us and, um, and there has been an overall impact. And that's why in the January sixth ruling, um, they basically said you can spend this money not just on COVID-related issues, but we understand the ripple effect through your whole operation. If you have less than ten million in ARPA funds and we have four point five million, you can use it on any regular municipal service or expenditure. So the, the funding, there is no restriction whatsoever, uh, from the, uh, from the federal government on how the funds can be used. Um, and capital is how most communities are choosing to use the lion's share of it, but just so we're, we're clear.
I, I don't believe anyone made an argument that this was ineligible cost. Yes. Scott, you had your hand up again?
Yeah, and then, uh, one of John's comments reminded me of the benefit of being able to then have the full funding source and get fully, um, those bids out is that we capture the contractors earlier in their cycles. So it, it further guarantees that we would be able to get the construction done in the timeline that we want to do if we have all those bids out and are first in line, uh, amongst those, those, um, construction companies and, and the, and the professionals we need. So there is a benefit in that respect from schedule to capture those resources early, get them on board, even if there's, you know, a timeline, you wouldn't start to put the other date, at least you have those folks under contact early.
Uh, personally, I'm not too terribly concerned about that, um, for the reasons that, um, there are a number of communities that don't have the financial resources to go ahead and even consider doing a roof without MSBA participation or don't have a roof that's in as severe needs, they may want to wait the couple of years until MSBA restarts the accelerated repair programs. I, I, I'm not terribly concerned based on some folks I know in the industry, um, that it doesn't look like it's going to be an especially busy year for roofers. Um, I'm not a roofer myself. I can't guarantee that, but that's, seems logical to me. Um, Julian, then I have a couple of further comments, but Julian, go ahead.
Again, could somebody comment on the, the period of time that we would be, okay, let's just say we say we're going to fund the forty five percent that MSBA would have funded. What, what amount of time are we actually losing here? If, if tonight we decided on this, a smaller amount, waited for town meeting for the other, the other part of the total one point seven million and how, how much, what are we talking? Will the roof be done by the time the kids get to school? Can we get some of it rolling with uh, forty five percent of one point seven million is seven hundred sixty five thousand dollars? Can we get some of it started?
I'll, I'll ask, John, I don't know if you have an answer to that.
You need the full, you, you can't buy half a roof. So you need authorization for the full roof and then, um, uh, the balance, which would be funded with debt would be effective July first. Because the issue is, in order for us to move forward, um, eventually you'd issue bans, but the way to get the project moving faster would be to advance yourself the money. That advance could not take, it cannot cross fiscal years. That advance cannot take place prior to July one. So, we will not be moving forward before July one.
Okay, so, um, if we did one portion and one portion, we would not, we would not get we couldn't do anything until July first is what you're saying.
Well, what would you do is if you got, uh, you, you release half the funds and then for some reason it doesn't pass town meeting? What, what do you, you can't do the.
Yeah, no, I, I, I understand that.
I don't know if there's, there's design and engineering bid spec preparation. Any of those things would certainly be able to be funded and, and started on right away.
So we have to go through a design process anyway first?
Need to create the bid specs and that's usually involves an architect. But, uh, John, you, yeah, I mean, I, I don't know whether that's already been done, whether the school department had funding for that.
No, no, the, the funding they had was to do, they just did an assessment of the roof.
Mm-hmm.
That's all.
Yep. Um, Scott, go ahead.
Yeah. So, you know, two further comments on the urgency, you know, one, so we've just talked about if you're splitting the funds and you try to do some of the project and then you're putting the rest of the project at risk based on a town meeting vote. That's a, that's a, that's a risk, uh, of getting the project done. The other element of urgency is the, the new roof isn't going to be dependent on when students return to school. The old roof is leaking. So the further we, the longer we delay, the roof continues to leak and we continue to have the problems in the school. So we should do everything we can to have the full project funded as soon as possible to get the roof fixed as soon as possible. So we don't have continued damage inside. So we've got a failing roof, not a, not necessarily trying to time when to get it, get it done by the time the students return to school. We have a failing roof that needs to be replaced.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I've seen nothing from the school department that makes me think that they're planning to actually do construction on the roof and have the roof open while kids are in session. Um, that is unusual. It can be done in emergency situations where you have a little extra space in a school to move the kids around and you do it in sort of multiple phases across a roof, but that increases the cost. I haven't heard anything that that's the project. I think this is planned to be and it's certainly sized appropriately to be a, a typical summer roof project. Jason.
Uh, I, I just wanted to confirm that any spending article financed by debt at town meeting requires a two-thirds vote to pass. Is that correct, John?
Yes.
So, two-thirds is a higher threshold and it may or may not be the case that uh, financially or philosophically, uh, certain voters may not be inclined to support that structure. I, I would not want the, uh, this particular project at risk. Of a debt finance, though, quite frankly, uh, we have the ARPA money, we can proceed immediately. It's the probably unquestionably the most urgent of the three projects we're talking about tonight. I don't see the point of trying to fine tune it here in respect to, uh, parceling out ARPA money and debt financing for this.
Our town has always been strong supporters of education in Northborough. I, I would be exceptionally shocked if town meeting refused to fund a school roof. I, I do want to say a little bit more about, um, my thoughts for ARPA funding and some of my reasons isn't just to hold on to it for the sake of holding on to it. Um, we have received a, a significant number of requests and over the past year, those have increased. We know that, as John mentioned, there's a risk of some recession headwinds that seem to be improving a bit. We one advantage of holding on to them for another year uh, is that we can help balance out any issues that may get worse next year. There are things going on in the world that could affect the global economy and the US economy and the Massachusetts economy in potentially very negative ways. I think while we have four and a half million dollars sitting in the bank, uh, it is beneficial to hold on to that. To deal with any unexpected expenses or unexpected revenue losses from the state that may occur next year. We have almost two years before we have to commit the funds uh, as to how we want to use them. End of calendar year twenty four is when we need to commit the funds and we have two more years after that to, uh, to fully expend them. Um, we have, um, a very expensive project coming next year. Um, hopefully, assuming that the, uh, fire station building committee gets, gets started, um, if that comes to town meeting this time next year or even a fall town meeting at some point in the future, that is a project that has been impacted by cost escalation, which I think related to COVID. That is an opportunity if we haven't found um, higher priority items by then, that's another opportunity where we could defer some debt to a, um, an extremely sizable project. Um, downtown redevelopment, uh, the master plan implementation committee is currently studying the downtown in great detail. I strongly suspect there will be a report back from them when their work is complete on possibly some parcels that might be advantageous for the town to acquire or acquire easements to. Um, I think it is helpful, given that those negotiations have to sometimes be very, very timely. Um, that might be advantageous for the town to have funding sources available to deal with those. I have nothing particular to suggest there because the report hasn't come out yet. Um, the complete streets project we know is beginning to get underway. It may be helpful for the town, for the board to, uh, to use some ARPA funds for some of those projects. Um, we know that there are some roadways in town that are in need of assistance. Uh, you know, we have received uh, requests from the Esbit Hill neighborhood, uh, people to help with their road, which is in pretty rough shape and, um, and is insulated to be dealt with on the capital plan for, I think, at least another five years. We've received, uh, multiple requests from, uh, boards and committees and, uh, individuals over issues regarding uh, mental health crises in town. We've received requests from the historical society. Um, and another issue that we, we may need to tackle is we know that there's the MBTA requirement for, um, uh, approving zoning changes for higher density housing. It is possible that the town might not want to approve those. There's a lot of, um, concern among the community for some of the projects that have been discussed and that puts grants at risk. And if that doesn't go forward, we may need to compensate for, um, some of the grants. So those are just some of the things that concern me and reasons that I, my preference is to, um, hold on to this money a little bit longer to see what what issues might come up that we might not be able to address if we spend the vast majority of this ARPA money on, uh, capital items tonight. Um, Scott, you've been raising your hand and then Kristen, you'll go next.
Yeah, so my trouble with, with, with this, and you just went through a list of things, is that we were supposed to have a categorization of all of the ARPA input such that we could do some prioritization. And we continue to wait on the delivery from you of that categorization. So it was, it was good to be reminded about some of these possibilities coming up, but we have nothing in hand from you that you promised to deliver. So we're left with the potential of projects. Yes, we know they're out there. We know many of them go through the capital planning process and we've been working on some of those aspects the last few weeks through those boards and committees. I'm unable to make a decision comparing defined critical projects of a known timeframe and cost versus those other possibilities. So to not act upon these projects. These projects and not to use the money we have in hand. And instead. Have a portion or some of these projects go to a debt vote at town meeting. Puts at risk the entire project. As Jason mentioned, we could set up the possibility of funding a portion of the roof through ARPA. Try to make plans to incur debt and have that go before the voters at town meeting. And the voters that are first. Or the voters that have the perspective, why are you raising my taxes when you're sitting on a pile of cash? They will tend to vote against it. The voters that have other projects that they think are more important than the school will vote against it. I know we've had a history of supporting the schools and I, I think we can, can rely on that. But we put the roof project at risk in its entirety by splitting the funding like this. And, and I'm concerned that we won't reach the two thirds majority we would need. To, to finance the rest of the project because we're going to have a substantial amount of people. That will say, why are you raising my taxes? When you're sitting on a pile of cash? I think we're going to hear that by many people at town meeting.
Kristen?
Um, I just noticed that the superintendent is in the attendees. And I was wondering if we could ask him, uh, Julian had some questions. That it sounded like it would be very handy if he happened to call in and I think he did, so.
Well, yeah, he's, he's been on the line. He, I, I knew he was there, but he has not raised his hand, so I didn't want to. Call him out in expectation of anything.
I called him.
Oh, look at that. He has raised his hand. I don't.
I just thought it would be nice to get some more and uh questions answered. That would make me feel better. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I will bring uh Greg in as a, as a special guest. Greg, if you could unmute, um, and for the formality, just let folks know who you are.
Sure. So thank you, Greg Martino Superintendent, um. And thank you for the discussion and debate over the Proctor roof. First of all, I appreciate the acknowledgement that the roof does need to be completed. It is a high priority for the school district and the school committee. Um, I did have a chance to speak with Garland Company um today about the Proctor roof. And did ask some very specific questions around timing of the project and its recommendations. Um, the first recommendation that Garland Company did provide was the fact that um. The timing to get the bids out and have a bid in hand is April. Um, he is seeing the queuing up of roofing projects um for this upcoming months. Um, and he thinks that in order to get this project conceded. By the end of the summer, um, that an April bid in hand uh would give us. The most surety in terms of moving forward with that um timeline. I also did ask him about the roofing project and having school in session. If the project were to start June before students were to get out, would it be feasible? Um, and he did indicate that this type of roofing project could be done when kids are in session. They are not removing the entirety of the roof, but rather the coating that is on the roof. So. Um, although not ideal, um, it is possible to. Move forward with the project while uh students are in session. From a school district perspective, I think that um. I think this is, we have a high sense of urgency in replacing this roof. Um. We appreciate the ARPA funds that were provided to the district of thirty eight thousand to mitigate some of the drainage issues. That has helped, um, but from my perspective at this point in time, it's. The sooner we can allocate the funds as a town, the sooner we can get this um, this roof replaced. Um, and my perspective is. You know, the funding source is really not up to me. It's up to the town. And we'll move forward how, whatever the town decides is the, is the most beneficial funding source.
Greg, uh, full question, if I could, um, do you want to go ahead and start the project? Before school is in session? I, I know you said it's.
Yeah, I mean, I think I, I would like to, uh, my, my biggest concern is getting the bid in hand. Um, during, we did talk about the requirement for design and the architecture. Um, that costs is about thirty thousand dollars according to the Garland Company. Um, that would allow us to do the work to get a bid out um in the timeline that he recommended, April. And potentially forget all of the bid process, the design, so forth. We could actually start um late May, early June. Which would then just give us more surety around finishing the project for the start of the school year. He said anywhere between six um two, uh, you know, a month to two months, depending on the contractor. Um, and the contractor's sense of urgency in terms of completing the project. Ideally though Mitch, um. You know, the project would happen when school is out and, and conclude before school returns to session.
Yeah, I can't imagine how disruptive it would be to um elementary school kids to have, to hear the noise of roofwork going on above them. During, during school, I've, I've seen that occur. It's not, sometimes it's unavoidable. Um, but it's not far from ideal. Um, while Greg is here as a, as a special guest, um, do any board members have additional questions for him? Kristen?
Yeah, so um, so talking about the um distraction of having roofers working. Um, I was thinking how distracting it is if. If there's um, you know, leaking and buckets and that kind of thing. And I think most of what. I've heard about the um. The conditions of the roof are either the pictures we've seen in our packets or um sort of word of mouth stories. Um, but could the superintendent just tell us a little more about how the roof is affecting the students right now?
Sure. So I think that, you know, there are um. Classrooms in the building where there are leaks. Um, when it does rain or there's snow melt. Um, teachers accommodate by again putting buckets to cap, capture the leaks. Um, so I think there's no, no. Um, disagreement that there is a sense of urgency to get this roof replaced and it is impacting the overall. Um, student experience at Proctor School. More than the issue around the leaks that we have. I'm more concerned about the amount of moisture. Um, the building is holding as a result of the failing roof. And the impact that has had over the past several years on uh air quality conditions in the building.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Greg? Julian?
Well, this is on a more positive note, um, but. Um, Superintendent Martino, could you just? Uh, comment on the possibility with a new roof of putting on solar panels, which would be beneficial to the school?
Sure. So um, the district did endeavor a solar feasibility study about five years ago. And I did a um assessment of all of our school buildings. Uh, Proctor School is um. Has a potential for solar panels. Um, however, the recommendation was to have the roof replaced before consideration. So. Once the roof is, is repaired and replaced. Um, then we can continue to pursue uh solar panels on the roof. To mitigate some of the energy costs and reduce our carbon footprint. And just, can I just make one last comment? I do appreciate the boards, um, the select board and the community's commitment to education. Um, I've never felt anything but support. Um, and you know, even this evening, although a debate about funding source, I, I still feel that the select board is supporting the project, which is. Um, really important moving forward.
Thank you. Greg, thank you very much for, uh, for joining us. Hey, um. We do have some hands up in the audience. Uh, do any board members wish to make any comment before, um, before I recognize the audience members who wish to participate and then we'll return. To. Um, sure, that's Jason.
Uh, I just wanted to suggest we acknowledge the input we've received from the appropriations committee, and I believe, I think financial planning committee maybe is also uh. Had some occasion to review this. Um. Being the committees that. Are by charter responsible for financial, uh, for, I should say, review and recommendation of uh appropriations budget and, and capital spending. I think uh. Their input is, you know, merited to some acknowledgement.
Thank you for mentioning that, Jason. Okay, um. Let's see, first in order of raising of the hands, uh Laura Zaitin. Laura, I'm bringing you in.
Hi, am I, is this just for the roof feedback? Are you looking for the feedback on all the ARPA topics?
Um, if you have something specific for one of the projects, this would be an ideal time if, uh, if it doesn't fit into either of the other categories, I suspect now. Um, a brief comment is acceptable.
Thank you. I'll be quick. So versus, I hope we can get the roof sorted out. It's been very nerve wracking and I hope that we can reach an agreement really quickly for Proctor. The other feedback about ARPA funding is regarding hybrid meetings. If we can continue to just prioritize that, I love the engagement that we've had from people. And if we can just really figure out the best way to have both, you know, both people be able to participate as we go forward. That's my only other request um at this time, but thanks for hearing out Laura Zaitin, seventeen Franklin Circle. Sorry about that. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you very much, Laura. Uh, next up in order Fran Backstrom. Fran, if you could unmute yourself and introduce yourself. Fran, you have unmuted yourself, but I don't hear you. Anyone else hearing Fran? Okay. Give it another couple of seconds and then I'll, I'll release you, but you're welcome to raise your hand again if you sort out your audio issues. Okay, Fran, I'm sending you back into the wilderness, sorry. Uh, Tim Kalen, you're up next. Tim, if you could unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you for taking my call. Uh, Tim Kalen, four, uh, Tim Kalen, forty two Davis Street. Uh, I am the chair of the Appropriations Committee. And I am calling in on behalf of the Appropriations Committee with their full support. Um, we held a meeting this week and voted unanimously uh to support. The ARPA funds being used for not only the Proctor School Roof Project, but also um. A new fire engine and also the, the tight tank project. Um, the biggest reason being, um, there's a lot of talk about the use of the ARPA funds and what's the, the best way. Um, and to unnecessarily raise residents' taxes while we have the money in the bank just doesn't seem to make sense. Um, it seems the best way to use the ARPA money. Is to indirectly return that to the residents by not raising their taxes. And using the funds to pay for things. Like these projects that would, would require um the issue, the issuance of debt, which would lead to higher taxes. Um, as everybody's mentioned, um, there's, you know, recession talk, um, inflation's been very high. People are coming out of the pandemic. One of the best things that this community can do and this board could do for those people is to not raise their taxes. When you have the money in the bank to be used for these projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, Mike Hodge.
Hi, Mike Hodge, to Beechwood Circle. I'm vice chair of the Town Financial Planning Committee. At our previous meeting, our committee voted unanimously to encourage the select board to. Fund with ARPA funds, the school roof, the fire engine and the DPW tight tank. Our thought process was these are projects that um the town has consistently supported. They have been in the queue, they have been vetted, they've been discussed. And the funds, these are projects that have to get done. This is great money to use it for, doesn't impact the taxes. If there are future projects that. The selectmen are looking at, um, ideally, these are projects that are transparent and do go through all boards and committees and the town does get a say in them. Um, so we just encourage uh you folks tonight to uh support funding those three items with ARPA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Kelly Gannett? Kelly, if you could unmute yourself. Hello?
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much. Uh, Kelly Gannett, sixty nine North Gate Road. Um, I am calling in because I am a Proctor parent. And um I have two girls um in fourth and fifth grade at Proctor and they have been impacted. Um, by the moisture at the school since two thousand eighteen. Um, we have, the school was shut down um for a late start because of mold in the building. Um, we've had leaks in their classrooms. Last year, my daughter um came home to tell me that she uh had a bucket. On her desk, next to her desk, collecting water. Um, it's a distraction. It's. Potentially hazardous, a danger for slippery floors. Um, I know that the roof has been fixed and they patch it. But we know the building is susceptible to mold. And um, the sooner we can get it fixed and replaced, the better. Um. I know, um. You mentioned about not having the kids in session when roof repairs done. Um, we've already been in session during roof repairs and we've been in session when they replace the roof. Um, the pitched roof over the gym. So the kids have been in session. Um, during roof repairs and things, and I don't think that that bit of distraction um is something to put off. Um, for voting for the use of the ARPA funds. So thank you so much.
You're. Sorry, Lisa Micali, I'm bringing you in. I was, I was muted. One strike against me. Lisa, if you could identify yourself?
Mitch, Lisa Micali, thirteen Maple Street. Um, I uh feel that the Proctor School roof is without a doubt something that needs to be done. Uh, everybody in town would like their children to be a safe, in a safe environment, in a learning situation. Um. The other two items, though, I don't feel are necessary and shouldn't come out of ARPA money. And um, and with the finance committee coming forward, I do know that in the last two meetings, there were only three members attending. And I don't know if questions were asked about the actual need of replacing the entire fire truck or what it would cost to fix it. And um, and I think that we run quickly into what we've done in the past and there's a lot of us now that would like to do something different. So let's keep those things in a process that we could find out how much it would cost to fix. And start to use some of our money for other things besides vehicles all the time. Um, I'd like to see some uh more than complete streets um. Thought I'd like to see, even if we buy paint and create crosswalks and do things with that that are not as expensive, but I think we have to attend to some of those. What we've wanted on those sidewalks and crosswalks for years. And even though that the state is not going to be able to give us any more money. We can't shrug our shoulders and say they aren't necessary. So um, so that is what I have to put in for tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa. Okay, Fran?
Uh, it looks to me like Mitch froze. Is everyone else still alive here?
Yeah. I think he froze.
Or there, if you could try to allow Fran in.
There he is.
Oh?
Uh, Mitch, just so you know, we, you kind of uh froze for about fifteen, twenty seconds there.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I think he's frozen again.
I think he's frozen again.
He's doing a good impression of freezing.
Julianne, I guess you're in charge.
So is, well, I'm not a co-host, but can anybody see if Fran is still waiting to speak or?
She doesn't have her hand up. I don't know.
Fran dropped out of the meeting and Julianne, you are her co-host.
Oh, okay. So I do see that on my screen that she has a raised hand. Can we let her in or?
Yeah, maybe Chief Parenti can do it.
Chief Parenti can take care of it.
Hi, Fran.
Hi, can you hear me this time?
Yes, very well, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. So this is Fran Backstrom. I'm calling from sunny Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, on a very old computer, which is why I did not know how to do the audio. But I am at 76 Cedar Hill Road in Northborough normally. I do just want to say that I everything that I've watched and participated in when we've been talking about ARPA funding, the Proctor School Roof has been the priority. Safety, health and everything else. I don't see any good reason why we would we wouldn't use that ARPA money, get the project going to select person with Ted's point. It is as distracting and and a concern for distraction for the children to be in an environment that they're currently in as opposed to the roof being on. So I do really hope if nothing else this evening, you do move forward on supporting, funding it pre-town meeting, get it going and move on with the other two. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. It looks like no one else has a raised hand. I feel awkward about moving this vote along. Yes, Jason.
Yeah, I think we can probably wait a few more minutes to see if Mitch can reconnect before we were to proceed with a vote, but I would like to. I would like to say that the three projects we have in front of us are not discretionary or delayable. These are three projects that have some time urgency to them. You have the school roof issue, you have the fire engine, and I'll ask Chief Parenti probably to speak to that because it was suggested that perhaps we could just repair it and keep it in service rather than replacing it, which I think we've already addressed in a prior meeting. And then third, the DEP regulatory compliance issue for tight water tank or tight tank, I should say, is again, not something that we can choose not to do, is something that does need to be done. And so it's more a question of agreeing or getting to the financing of these projects and not not whether or not they can be further delayed or postponed. I asked Julianne, if you could, I'd like to ask Chief Parenti to comment on the condition of the fire engine and the viability of continued repair as opposed to replacement.
So before we do that, Mitch just notified us that he's trying to get back online. And I did see another person, Megan, somebody who raised their hand. Can, is she still there?
There's a Morgan Doyle.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Can we let her in?
That's.
Okay, Morgan, you're in.
That's one of our firefighters, Julianne.
Oh, oh, okay. So that's probably about, okay. So.
Morgan.
Are you there? You're unmuted. But we can't hear you. So something.
I'll move him out for now. If he wants to speak, he can raise his hand again. Mitch came back and you have another hand up, Julianne.
And.
My my apologies. I don't know what was going on with my internet service during on my iPad. I'm gonna my video for a second, go to another room so you don't see me shaking around. I'll be right back.
Okay, so Morgan Doyle has left us?
Yeah, he, I assume it was an inadvertent hand raised. You have another hand up, though.
Okay, we're ready.
You want me to move her in? Okay.
Please.
Suzie, you're in.
Hi, Suzie Sislicke, Emerson Road. I had sent everyone an email earlier today, decided to give a call in as well just to further speak about the Proctor School conditions and what was going on with the kids in the school. Moldapalooza, as I referred to it in our letter, did really impact our kids more than I had referred to in the letter earlier. They had to start school later than the other kids. Yes, we took them to Davis Farmland and we did have. I mean, it was awesome. We had, there was no one in Davis Farmland, but me and my three kids, so that was kind of cool. But it really impacted my son as a as a first grader that he had to go to school on a Saturday and we had to go to school when other kids had half days. I will say, and this is just like word of mouth, when they go back to school in August and September, a lot of the kids come home with headaches, like as moms, we're all talking about it, like is there mold? What's going on? You go into the classrooms. I mean, not only do you have air purifiers, you have the dehumidifiers. I let my kids wear shorts. And I know, I know, when they get to middle school, they're all going to be in shorts. I understand that. I I'm ready for it next year. But like, I let my kids wear shorts like all the time. It's like warm in their classrooms from the machines going all the time. And I really have a fear for the mold coming back. When I practiced or was a law student in California, I did do an internship working on a mold litigation case. It's not something to fool around with at all. This is something that needs to be fixed. If we have a way to fix it, I don't, I don't want to gamble. I have been involved in things that go to town meeting. Free kindergarten, as you all remember, we never wanted to bring it. We didn't want to bring it to a vote at town meeting. We knew that we would have the support. I probably, I would have dragged people there off the street to get the votes for free kindergarten. And I would do it again for this roof, but it's it's just not worth it. And I I just implore you to use the ARPA funds for it. And that's basically it, because between the buckets, you know, I have to tell my kids now, I have to say, can you just let mommy know if you see a bucket anywhere where one does not belong? So I can know now. And then we, you know, we go into basketball and there's a bucket and then like a trough like to catch the water. And you're in the gym and you see buckets like in the gym where they're not supposed to be. And it's just not a very good environment. But I just want to thank you all. And I I hope to see some of you for Kindness Week. I know Kristen's going to cover the rest of it. We're still making Valentine's Day boxes here a little late. But I just wanted to say thank you and please please vote for the ARPA funds for the Proctor Roof. Thank you. I'm gonna try, if you can disconnect me, I'll just try to do it. I'll lower my hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzie.
I apologize, everyone, for the the Wi-Fi issue at my house seemed to be with my computer. Wi-Fi on my iPad is fine, so I'm gonna try to continue the meeting as best I can from here. Sorry that no one gets to see the the Northborough door behind me for the rest of the meeting. Do we, I do want to check, do we have any other hands up? I know it's we do have a couple here. Jason, I see your hand up. Do you want, it's fine, go ahead. We've had a number of of comments. Jason, do you want to say anything before?
There wasn't, there was a earlier comment made by a member of the public to the effect that perhaps the fire engine could be delayed or deferred and just simply repaired rather than replaced. I wanted to, I had asked earlier through Julianne, we didn't get to it yet, but I wanted to ask Chief Parenti to give some comment on that, some expert comment. It's something that we've already discussed in one of our prior meetings. I think the need is well established, but I'd just like to reinforce that if we could in response to that.
Yeah, my preference is, I I agree, we should hear from the chief on that. My assumption is we're still on the school roof discussion and have not voted on that, correct? Again, I missed about three minutes of of meeting. So let's let's wait on that one.
Take any votes, right, right.
Right, yeah, let's let's wait on that one until until we're formally discussing the fire engine, then we'll definitely give the chief an opportunity to weigh in. Okay. All right, we have Morgan Doyle with a hand up. Morgan, I'm bringing you in.
Good evening. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we hear you.
Perfect. I had to switch computers. Sorry about earlier. I
I know how you feel.
Completely agree with the Proctor School being used for ARPA money. Mold and mildew, the effects of humidity, especially on on the younger generation, is incredibly huge for me. Oh, I forgot to say, my name, Morgan Doyle. I live at Nine Davis Avenue here in Northborough. So yeah, so the Proctor School, I agree with the ARPA money completely to be used for that. The fire engine, I don't want to see us put money into repairs that then we have to go later and replace it in a couple of years, just like how we put money into the into the Proctor Roof. I don't want to see us put the money into the roof to then have it be need to be repaired again in a couple of years, same exact points that we'll be on earlier with that. And the DPW tight tank, I agree with for ARPA money as well.
Thank you, Morgan.
Could someone repeat that? I could barely hear.
He was speaking in support of ARPA funding for the for the roof.
Okay.
Yeah. And related items. Apologies, Marley Borden. Bringing you in. Marley, if you could identify yourself.
Hi, Marley Borden, 63 Little Pond Road. I just, I apologize, I'm jumping in a little bit late to the meeting, so I might have missed some of the conversation. But I just want to weigh in that I think, I hope that you guys will look at spending the ARPA funding on a mix of capital projects, but also money that can be invested in our community in a way that will grow it and that will see some return on investment. So I understand the need to put, you know, money towards certain certain capital projects. I think the the Proctor Roof is a primary example of that. But I think we also need to look at, you know, if ARPA funds didn't exist, then some of this would be covered. You know, if we needed a fire truck, our town's going to pay for a fire truck. And we've, you know, we've been there before and we've gotten that stuff approved in town meeting. If ARPA didn't exist, how would we be paying for that fire truck? And I recognize that things were set aside and budget was set aside because of the pandemic. And this is a way to remedy some of that. But I also know that the intent of the ARPA funding is also to for economic recovery and economic development. And, you know, there's been an argument about whether it's a windfall or not. I've seen a million different economic experts and state government experts call it a windfall. And I think there's a real opportunity for us here to leverage that money to really get some return for our town. And I just question whether putting it all into capital is going to do that. So I hope that you guys will look at a balance of capital investments, but also looking at projects that are really going to have a greater return where we can see that money, you know, come back twofold for our community.
Thank you very much, Marley. Okay, I apologize. Control of such things is a little slower at the moment. I see no other hands up in the attendees. Let's return to to board discussion and see if we can get this resolved. Any members have any further comment? Or thoughts or questions? I see none. I saw Julianne and then Jason a split second later. Julianne?
So initially, I I understood and agreed with the argument about doing it kind of half and half. But now that now that I hear that the roof is still continues to pose problems in the school, I guess I was hoping that the repairs we put in last year had solved that problem. And I, I, I think I'm I'm thinking that we should do the the project as soon as possible.
Apologies, I needed to relocate again as the room I was in was taken over by family. Okay, Jason, you had your hand up right after Julianne, if I remember right.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. If we are just focusing only on the school project, then I just will restate that I believe that we should put that project on the fastest track possible. And the way to do that is to fully fund it with ARPA. So that there isn't any question about funding, so there isn't any question about any further process delay to get all of the funding in place for the project.
One thing I will, I will add is obviously, fully funding this project at 1.7 million removes additional flexibility for other projects, whether they be projects that were on the agenda tonight or anything in the future. But you know, I certainly want to see this project go forward. As others have mentioned, it is my highest priority project of the three on the agenda tonight. And perhaps it's maybe not the wisest idea to split split the funding and look towards putting the other two onto the warrant as as standalone items as, again, they they would have been otherwise. Any other comments or questions? And if somebody is raising their hand in the audience, I want to apologize, I cannot see that from my current device, so someone can yell out to me if that's the case.
There are no hands up.
Thank you very much, Chief. Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to approve the release of 1.7 million dollars in ARPA funds to the School Department for purposes of replacing the flat roof at the Proctor Elementary School.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Julianne, seconded by Kristen. Any other discussion? No, I will now, sorry, I'm sorry, now on two devices. Hold on just a second.
How dramatic.
Technology. All right, my laptop seems to be happy again. All right, we are now timed for a vote. Julianne, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Congratulations, School Department, to the Proctor people. You've got a roof. All right, so next item within this agenda is the still have to relaunch some of my screens here, I believe it's the fire engine. So continuing on, there was a a question and Jason, you asked the chief to provide some clarification. I think it's worthwhile getting a little bit of an update on that. First, sorry, I want to, I want to follow the same steps that we did. Or, sorry, get my microphone back in here. Same steps that we did for for the earlier project. First, first item is, do we want to go forward with this project this year? I know this has been on the capital plan. I know it was discussed last year. Does anyone have any any thoughts or any any opinions, particularly in the in the negative, to not go forward with it this year? Okay, I think, you know, we have, I'm in favor of it also. I think it does make sense for for the chief to weigh in, to address the comment that was raised earlier and maybe tell us a little bit more about the struck for the public's benefit, chief.
So the truck we're talking about is Engine One. Engine One has been in the CIP for its duty to be replaced. It's at the end of life. Not just the pump, the pump is problematic, but the pump is at the end of life. If we were to put $20,000 into repairing the pump, I'm still replacing the truck. Makes sense, because it is due to be everything else is wearing out, the brakes are wearing out, the either it's your typical fire truck used for 20 years. Doesn't make sense to me to put $20,000 into a truck that I'm going to be so it's on the CIP for this year. So it's on the CIP for this year anyway.
Okay, uh, Jason?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, uh, appreciate the chief's clarification and I would point out that at this time, or I should say nearly a year ago in the spring when we were first uh seeing uh a list of these projects for consideration for ARPA. Uh, this fire engine, I think at that time was listed at eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, with the passage of time, uh, and cost escalation and inflation, it's now listed uh on on the the docket here at nine hundred thousand dollars, and so we certainly have that saved any money through delay at this point and, uh, it's a long timeframe, uh, long lead time item, uh, I I I don't think that, uh, there's any purpose served in suggesting that we shouldn't do this project or that we should further delay this capital project.
Yeah, Mister Chair, I I, you know, I was speaking to some other fire chiefs. Allo Pepperell, um, North Hampton, Marlboro and and Hudson. All four faced with that same thing, they had a truck coming up. They had to buy it on the price, we're escalating so rapidly, they all decided to use ARPA. Interesting one in Marlboro is it's a one point three million dollar uh power truck that they're.
I can't hear the chief, can anybody else?
I can't, I was worried, it was, it was my wifi, I'm glad it, I'm glad it wasn't.
Hear me now?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, it's a, it's a bad connection, I, again, I remember I was, I was moved to the back room, I apologize. Um, there's, uh, I I spoke with several of the chiefs in the last couple of weeks and uh, there's quite a few, there's Lowell, there's Pepperell, there's um North Hampton, Marlboro, Hudson. And they were all faced with the same type of thing, they had a truck that was due to be replaced in their capital, it's been in there for six years, they're ready to do it. And they found the prices were escalating so rapidly, uh, they were able to use ARPA funds, get their orders and lock those prices in, as opposed to having to pay greater price six months down the road or a year down the road. I just wanted to make aware of that.
Thanks, Chief. Julianne?
So if this goes to town meeting, how much money will we be asking for?
Nine hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so um, and I I just like to point out that we just spent one point seven million dollars and we're down to two point five five left in the ARPA funds, so I think we better keep that in mind as we go through the next couple of items.
Comments, questions? Scott?
Yeah, just to, you know, this is the, the second time this board has, you know, talked about this piece of equipment and, you know, then we have the benefit in this, in this cycle, um, talking about it through both the Financial Planning Committee and the Appropriations Committee. So this is another item that is high risk, you know, we risk of a mechanical failure on this, um. It's not just the cost, but you know, should the failure occur on the way to uh an incident, then we're talking delays as we wait for mutual aid to to bring in a, an engine from another community. Um, we also have a, um, the risk of further delays, um, so had we purchased this, yes, last year, it would have been eight hundred thousand dollar and a one-year lead time. Now we're looking at nine hundred thousand dollars in a two-year lead time, so this is something that's only getting worse and and needs to, uh, be approached with a sense of urgency.
Kristen?
Um, so I, uh, yeah, I remember talking about this also, and I also remember the the community meeting that we had last year. And I, I'm acknowledging Julianne's point that, um, we did just spend one point seven million dollars, so that was a big, big chunk that honestly I wasn't um, when we, when we first had that community meeting at Trinity Church, um, about how to spend the ARPA money and all the ideas, everybody had the one point seven million dollars for a Proctor School roof wasn't in there, um. But it's hard to, you know, it's hard to say no to that kind of thing. And, um, and I do appreciate the fact that we want to be smart about our money and we want to be, you know, having been a conservative fiscally conservative town for a long time, um, where th- this is a, this is the point of view of a lot of people in town that this is the best way to spend the money, we have it in the bank, let's just spend it on these big ticket items and then we won't have to pay for them with debt. But we have this other point of view from all these other concerned citizens, Merrily Borden sort of spoke um, to this point that a lot of people were really interested in other projects, which we haven't had a chance to talk about. And if we do say yes to these two other very large projects tonight, um, a lot of those other projects are never going to get talked about, um. And I, I really don't want that to be the case, so um, that's kind of where my mind is going right now.
Thank you, Kristen, Jason?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, um. To, to as far as other projects that haven't been talked about, to Scott Rogers' point earlier, it was the end of June last year, following the public input session, where two members of this board volunteered to collect, organize and package all of the requests so that it could be presented to this board to make an evaluation and perhaps even begin funding some of those requests within the next one or two meetings. And that would have been the single July meeting and the single August meeting. Those meetings came and went, two meetings in September came and went. When we set the fall schedule, we added an extra meeting at the beginning of October with the idea that we were going to have a lot of work to do and we'd need extra meetings to to do that work. That meeting was canceled, uh, because, uh, evidently to that point, three full months having elapsed, uh, since June, no work had been done to collect, gather, organize the information to present it to this board. And then finally, in part because of my prompting with emails asking what the status was, we finally had it addressed at the October, I think it was seventeenth meeting. And what we had was this list of one-line items with next to no description of any of these projects, no clarification what those projects were, no dollar amounts attached to those projects, no context for who had proposed the project. And then at that meeting, it was suggested that what we needed to do was schedule a full working meeting of this board to do that work and put all that information together so we could make a full evaluation and make some decisions. And then since that meeting, the only thing we've done is entertain the request from Community Meals to fund their pro- uh, program and otherwise haven't had any discussion, any further information, any organization, any comprehensive look at whatever the proposals have been submitted to date. So now here we are on the cusp of spring twenty twenty-three town meeting. We need to get the budget set, we need to get the warrant articles set, we need to get all of our funding articles set. And so the notion that we should delay further in expending some of this ARPA money because maybe something will turn up, maybe something will develop, maybe something will become more fully formed, to me just seems like a, a waste of time and effort when we have projects right in front of us with well-defined costs, well-defined risks, well-defined, uh, potential escalations. We have a huge fire station project coming up in the next cycle, hopefully. It's going to be an enormous, uh, debt issuance tied to that. And to suggest that these projects should be uh, funded through debt uh, on a piecemeal basis or something, uh, with that thing looming, just doesn't make any sense at all to me as a separate debt issuance. So I would like an explanation of exactly what projects other members of this board foresee and in what dollar amounts and what timing to suggest that we should not proceed with the things we have on the table right now where we understand the cost, we understand the tax impact, and we know exactly what we're doing for our citizens by spending the money we have in hand. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason, um, these were the only three items that I was requested to put on the agenda, so those are the three here, um, happy to put those on when you'd like, if, uh, Jason, if you have additional items you'd like to schedule for the next.
Additional item I have is, is asking the two members of this board who are going to presumably do some work and present that information to us. Do you have a timeframe, do you have a schedule that you expect to complete that work?
I can put it on the next agenda if you'd like.
You're saying that the work to comprehensively organize all of the proposals that have been submitted will be on the agenda for the next meeting. Because I'm looking back and seeing like seven months having elapsed to this point without that having been done. So who is going to do that work is my question.
I, I think that's a little bit off topic for an agenda item that's isolated to these three items. Uh, Scott, you had your hand up?
Uh, yes, and you, you've made my point right there, I do not think it's off topic. You're, you're asking us to defer projects that are in front of us for an unspecified list of projects that you committed to providing and have not provided. So I ask as well as the same question as Jason, is when will we have the categorized compilation of the public input to ARPA so that you can make good on wanting to get this information, promising to compile it, promising to make progress on it and have done, but essentially nothing on, on these promises that you made to the public.
Yeah, eh, this agenda was, was published late last week, anyone could have asked me for that, um, and I would have had that ready for this meeting, uh, asking me now, I can't provide it right now, if you'd like, I'll provide it for our next meeting.
If you can provide what's needed in the next, for the next meeting, I look forward to having that comprehensive package.
Sure. Okay, any other questions or comments? Again, we're, we're trying to talk about the fire truck project. Julianne?
So in our packet, it said that if we did not fund the three items tonight, the average tax bill would go up by sixty-one dollars per year. Now that we have agreed to fund the, um, the roof that would probably, I'm just guessing, but it's probably reasonable that the average tax bill will be affected by about thirty dollars, which is less than a dollar a week, and okay, yes, we haven't had the big discussion about ARPA, there's, um, you know, we have attended to a lot of business and if, you know, I apologize for that. But you all have the list of the many, many, many items that have been requested, and I tend to also feel the way Merrily, um, voiced the, you know, the opinion that the ARPA money should be used for for improving the quality of life in town, getting more return on investment, a a, addressing problems that were, are not necessarily ever going to be a, um, in our capital improvement plan. This is an amount of money that we're never going to see again, so let's, I, my opinion is spend it judiciously on things that will help the projects that the people have been asking for, such as downtown revitalization.
Thank you, Julianne, I, I agree with you. Any other questions or comments? Jason?
I'd just like to point out that to the extent needed, uh, a number of future projects could be funded through debt issuances, uh, as well. To the extent that they pertain to capital development.
Sure, uh, Kristen?
Um, will you remind me again when, um, when we have to have spent the money, isn't it a two-tiered thing? Can you explain that again?
John, you can.
Yeah, it's, needs to be committed by December of twenty twenty-four and expended by twenty twenty, uh, six.
Twenty twenty-six.
The entire.
December of twenty twenty-six is the deadline.
The, the entire amount, okay.
Yeah, so we need to, to have voted on things, um, by the end of December of twenty twenty-four. Um, entered into contracts and so forth and then sent out the last check two years later, so we have a little under two years to make final determinations on how the money gets spent.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. Okay, um, I have one member of the audience with a hand up, George Brinkel. If my computer works. Um, Chief, I, maybe I'm not a host anymore after, um, my resumption, if you could bring him in, thank you.
No, you're still a host.
Yeah, hello, I couldn't do that, George, if you could identify yourself, please.
Uh, George Brinkel, Three Little Pond Road. I'm also a member of the Appropriations Committee. Um, again, and this is building on some of the comments that, you know, Jason and Scott have made, uh. We have these projects in front of us that are must-dos. We have the money to do them. To take on debt to do those projects again for future projects at the moment that are out on unspecified, does not seem like a wise way to proceed to me. People keep mentioning that there's, you know, potential for a return on investment. If we have one of these projects actually gets developed, so we actually know what it is, what it's going to cost and what the return will be, if it has this return on investment, it will make sense to issue debt to do that project and it will be easy to do. But to hold this up and to just not deal with these things right now because there may be some sort of future return on investment, doesn't make any sense. Uh, defining the project, coming up and saying, here's what it is, here's what it's going to cost, here's the return, it will be obvious of what we need to do and how to fund it, uh, I I really don't like the idea of sitting on money because there may be some potential ephemeral future return on investment that's never been specified. Thank you.
Thank you, George, and thank you, Chief, for, uh, re-enabling my responsibilities here, uh, Lisa Moselli, and next?
Uh, Lisa Moselli, thirteen Maple Street, um, would it be possible to take these two items and put them in with the items that you'd have for the next meeting and to be able to have them all together to make a decision on based on everything that has been brought forward, not these, just these two items that are and have been already put in the capital plan? And last time I heard, the capital plan was two years that they were going to already have what we planned, now why are we doing buying it early? And, um, the amount of money that could be saved on, let it be repaired for a while and then let it go next, because prices of vehicles are coming down now, they were jumping up because of the, uh, the pandemic and now they're starting to come down, so we may even get something for seven hundred thousand if we wait a little while. But I'd like to see everything all together, not just tonight's two and then whatever you do the next meeting.
Thank you, Lisa, um, I'll, I'll address that briefly, if I could, my understanding is, uh, uh, John needs to know now whether or not we're going to fund these with ARPA so that he can prepare the town meeting warrant on the assumption that we do want to go ahead with a project that's not funded by ARPA, that, that accurate, John?
Yes, we, I, I can't wrap up the capital budget, uh, documents or the operating budget or the town meeting warrant without a decision being made on these projects.
Okay, I mean, it is theoretically possible that we could not allocate ARPA money tonight, you could put it on a warrant and then sometime prior to town meeting, we could fund it with ARPA and then we'd pass over it to town meeting. I'm not suggesting that we go that approach, um, I, I think it is easier for everyone all around for the board to make its decision tonight and, and stick by it. Um, Mike Hodge, you're in next, I'll bring you in. Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you again, Chairman, I think it is critical for the board to be transparent. And I know the master plan identified beautification of downtown as a priority. I've been here forty-six years, it's been a priority, I don't think there's debate that we do need to do something. I think the scope of the project is going to be large. And I think if the board And I think if the board undergoes committing a few million dollars. Then comes to town meeting four years from now saying we need another seven. Hey, look, we've already spent this. We're kind of tied into it. It's not been vetted. It's not gone through committees. I think in the interest of transparency. The townspeople should have the right to vote on the scope and extent of the project at town meeting. Use the ARPA funds for things that have been in the plan. Have been vetted and are a clear and present need, not a want. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I will say that uh some some will make an argument that none of these ARPA funds should be decided by. Three to five members of a board that they should all go to town meeting. Um, but this is, these are the rules under which we have been given these funds. Um, but again, you could make the argument that while the fire truck should really be decided at town meeting. Um. As anything else and, you know, regarding the downtown plan that's going through the master plan committee, that's an extremely public process, one of the most public processes that I've seen. Uh, in town to date. Um Fran Baxter or F Baxter, I assume it's Fran, let you in.
Yep, it's me again. Thank you very much, Fran Baxter, seventy six Cedar Hill Road. Um, to select person Hersch's point earlier that um. The tax burden is going to be reduced now that you have agreed to put the roof through ARPA. Please be mindful that these are not the only. Um. Pieces of the budget that are going to impact the tax base. Yes, maybe only thirty dollars for the fire truck and the tank. But there are other aspects of the budget that can impact the tax burden of the residents. And even though social security did do something amazing at eight point seven five percent increase in social security this year. It still becomes a burden, even thirty dollars a year, a dollar a month, I would no, not dollar a month. Thirty dollars a month for ten months. Um, it's it's still gonna be a burden, so I wouldn't be. Um, I don't believe she was being cavalier about the the amount at all, but we really should be mindful of the fact that. If we can avoid increasing the taxes on our residents, we should do it, and the ARPA money is a way to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. Uh, Amy Peretzky, bring you in. Yeah, good, Amy.
Hi, Amy Peretzky, forty seven Indian Meadow Drive. And I'm sorry, I'm just tuning in. So I missed some of it, but um. I think what I heard was that the fire truck was two years out, so it could wait two more years. And there's also a chance that it could be repaired. Um, with the downtown revitalization, there needs to be some funds for seed money, and I don't know if you can bond seed money for grants. The downtown revitalization. Is going to um wrap up in April with the consultants. So um, I think there needs to be some seed money. There's something, some grants that they can go forward with. I feel like something like a nine hundred thousand dollar fire truck should be something that goes in front of town meeting. If there's a chance it can be fixed, maybe people don't want to. Spend that much money. If you can fix it, I know like with my car, you can fix it and go a couple more years. It seems like an awful lot of money to take out of ARPA when you have two more years of ARPA money. To make that decision. I see Chief Frante is raising his hand.
Sure, um, Amy, thank you very much for your comment, and I'll I'll give it to you. Thanks. Um, Chief, I suspect you're going to say that uh if there's a two year. Uh, delay, it doesn't mean two years until you order it. It means you you would order it when you have the money available and then you wait two years before you get the truck. Is that accurate?
Yeah, good. The truck's due to be replaced now. By ordering it now, it's gonna be two years past its replacement day. It's not like we can order it in two years, then we're going to be out even further. The truck is due to be be now it's not. Make sure. How I got confused, but it's it's not due to be replaced because it's due to be replaced now.
Okay. Thank you. Um, John.
Uh, I just want to draw people's attention to the memo that was provided on page seven, contemplates. Uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be used for phase one of the downtown. Uh, design work. So that seed money is there. If all three projects, so we're clear of all three projects are approved tonight, that still leaves one point three million dollars. Uh, available of which phase one of the downtown project based on everything submitted uh from the town uh planner. Would be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of seed money, and the reality is uh projects like this between. Design, construction, these are three year projects all day long. So if in the in the ARPA funding cycle timeframe. I think we'll be uh we'll be lucky by time we finish rounding out what what phase one actually is. Uh, deciding on that, getting seed money, applying for grants, getting the grants, signing contracts and construction. I think you'll be lucky to get phase one of ARPA of of the downtown project. In the timeframe that we have to expend ARPA. I don't think people maybe fully appreciate. The timeline that it takes to bid these things out, select contractors. You negotiate contracts and actually get things expended. So uh in again, in the memo, in the remaining one point three million of the three projects that are before you tonight is funded. There is ample funding for phase one design work of the of the downtown master plan. You're not going to get three phases of the downtown in. For ARPA funding. Um, there just isn't that much time. Uh, these things do take a a good amount of time, so I just wanted to make sure people understood that.
So. Make sure I understand you correctly, John, that you're suggesting that we allocate at a future meeting another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from ARPA funds. For downtown work.
Uh, no, what I'm saying is I in in preparation, we've asked, because I know the downtown projects, uh, you know, it the downtown revitalization um initiative. This is a law. This is initiative that's going to go for five, ten years. This isn't something that's going to get done in 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 three years. Um, what I'm what I'm saying is if you're holding money aside. With the thought that you're going to fund the downtown revitalization projects because it's multi phased over many, many years. What I'm trying to say is there's plenty of money to fund the initial design uh seed money that we've been talking about. And again, this is a made up number. It's a plug number from the uh from the town planner. Based on experience that, you know, we're probably looking at a two, two and a half million dollar project. Needing about ten percent in design funds, two hundred and fifty thousand. Again, none of this, we don't have, you know, that detail yet, but my point being is as this is laid out, it contemplates that there is ample funding. For phase one uh seed money for the downtown um project. If you if the if the board decides.
That that wouldn't include land acquisition or easements or anything like that, correct?
I don't know what it would include, frankly, uh, because it's too preliminary, but you're going to run out of time with these ARPA funds. Uh, if um, you know, if you're if the thought processes were holding to do the whole downtown uh project first of all. And these are just really ballpark ballpark numbers. You're somewhere between nine, twelve, fifteen million dollars. You're gonna have to go back to town meeting for bonds on that stuff anyway. Um, but uh but in terms of just basic seed money, at least on the front end, what can be determined at this point because it's unknown. The town planner, uh, just as a placeholder in the capital budget, we're including two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So.
But some sometime between now and the next few months, I think we'll learn a lot more from the from the downtown study from master plan and uh. And and be able to to schedule those or we're not looking about doing ten million dollars right away because. I don't think we we would even if we had the money. Um, but I I my preference is to hold on to some of that money so we can take some decisive action on the downtown project. Uh, if at all possible, and by the time we get to town meeting next year, we'll have a much better idea of that. And as I said at the beginning of the whole ARPA discussion, I think it is viable to then consider putting some of ARPA money towards. The debt of the or towards the fire station construction project, which has gone up substantially over those several years that that's been sitting on a shelf.
Uh, we're either gonna we're either gonna issue debt for these projects or debt for the fire station.
Hmm.
But you're gonna issue debt either way.
Agreed. Yeah, and and that addresses the concerns of of a couple of people seem to think that we wouldn't be. Issuing debt. Um, we would or wouldn't. It's it's a matter of what are we issuing the debt for and when? Um, and how quickly can we act? The ARPA funds give us the flexibility of acting very quickly. Uh, which town meeting does not. Uh, any members of the board have any comments or questions? Okay, um. I don't see any other hands up from the the audience. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve the release of nine hundred thousand dollars in ARPA funds to the fire department to purchase a replacement fire engine.
Second. Motion made by Scott, seconded by Jason. Um, let's see all those in favor. Uh, Jason, how do you vote?
I.
Julian.
No.
Christian.
No.
Scott.
Yes, hi.
I vote no. Uh, the motion does not carry. Um. Moving on to the uh the tight tank. Um. This is a project I'm also somewhat familiar with because I know it was discussed last year. Um, I actually have a question. Uh, on that, you know what, like, I have a question on the project, just in terms of 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 general scope. That I looked through some recent capital plans going back a few years and I saw a um. Two million dollar project for rebuilding or for expanding and renovating. The DPW garage that included this tank. And then a couple of years ago, it changed to being just the tank. So I'm curious about that and whether you foresee any future construction project of the DPW garage.
Um, well, tell that, John. Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the uh. It was a feasibility study for um a garage expansion done um by the prior director. The consulting firm that we used for that study is the same firm that we used for the tight tank design. Um, the funds for uh uh the expansion. I just didn't seem to be there in the capital plan. So I uh extract extrapolated out the um tight tank. The tight tank design layout will accommodate a future garage expansion when and if it happens. Uh, but at this point, the the garage expansion is not on the capital plan.
Okay, so so that's been removed and you don't see that happening in the next five or ten years?
Considering what other building projects are on the horizon. Uh, fire station, town hall, uh, Four West Miami, there's a lot on the on the on the on the table, and I don't see. I don't see it coming up anytime soon.
Okay, all right. So um, again, the first question is, is this a project we are funding now? Um. Either John or Scott, if you could uh give us a little bit of clarification. I know this is a. Um, this is to meet a DEP requirement. What is the timing on that requirement? Are we at risk of of being fined or otherwise this year or next year? Um, if we don't do this right away, uh, I just want to understand the the scope of this a little bit more.
The um. So the 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 conditions not being compliant came about when the um MS four uh stormwater. Uh, prevention plan was implemented down at the highway garage. Uh, DEP, that plan was submitted to DEP. MS DEP is aware. Of what's going on, which is uh for those that don't know. Um. We wash all of our trucks after every storm event. Um, and during the uh non snow season in the garage bay, the garage bay has floor drains like all buildings do. And those floor drains go out to the septic system. Um, we are not allowed to discharge. Wash water to our septic system. It's a DEP violation. Um, DEP has not issued us um. Any notification. So their first tier of non compliance is an N O N, notice of non compliance. That typically is followed up by a written response indicating a timeframe for compliance. Um, if compliance doesn't come forward after the N O N is issued. An ACO comes out, an administrative consent order, that typically has fines attached to it. Neither of those uh positions have been taken yet by DEP. They see that we have a tight tank on our capital plan. Um, they understand that it's coming and we're doing the best we can with budgets. Um, I would expect a notice of non compliance to come to the town eventually. When that happens, I don't know. Um, but it would be nice to not have an N O N issued to Northborough for our highway garage.
Thank you for the uh the description, comments, questions from the board. Jason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, again, I see this as being kind of like a a compliance issue. Um. I think we like to think of ourselves as good Commonwealth citizens and. Address these things before they become an issue, before they become a subject of fines and the like. Uh. I will support this request for ARPA funding to address this uh particular capital item.
Hey, Julian.
Yeah, so so tonight we've really had to make some decisions of about projects that are. That have immediate need and and that could go before town meeting. So. Could we look at this in a in a little slightly different way? This gets brought up before town meeting. It fails. But since we haven't, since we haven't expended the money from ARPA, could we have that discussion after town meeting and say? Um. It failed at town meeting. Scott says we get the non compliance. Um, notification. We could, we would still have money to fund it. After town meeting, should it fail? Is is that what is that a correct? Thought there?
John, do you want to address that?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, yes, we 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 still have, as long as we still have the money, we could, we could spend it on that again. We wanted to.
The 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 point here is that. We lay out the needs. We know what the needs of the community before our before the pandemic hit, we have a comprehensive capital plan that lays out all the needs. So we know what the needs are for the town. I think it's a dangerous approach of going, well, we'll send it to town meeting. If they fail to pass it, then we'll use ARPA funds. If you won't use ARPA funds, just use ARPA funds. But I but I think that's you don't want to go. When we go to town meeting, one of the reasons why. We have had fourteen consecutive years of success with every budget and every capital project. Is because they're well thought out, they're well framed up, the budgets are good, we go to town meeting and we say we need this. And this is why. Then all the boards and committees review it and the history for the fourteen years has been that that unanimous support. And you go to town meeting and you ask for it. I don't know that you want to start getting in a position where we're kind of going to throw things up at town meeting and if they don't bite. Then, you know, we'll figure out some other way to do it. Good planning requires us to to lay out a plan to all get behind it and hopefully go to town meeting and explain. As a corporate entity, why something, you know, needs to be done and why it needs to be done now. So the short answer is. Yes, you know, if it goes to town meeting and it fails. Then you can, of course, use ARPA funds, but it begs the question of if that's the case, why not just use the ARPA funds now? You're gonna have to do this project. And you want to do other projects. Um, the bottom line is it's all money for the town in terms of the tax impacts. You know, and so when you look at these projects, we've got immediate needs. The reason why these projects came through and why the boards and committees are advocating for them is that there are no needs. We want to clear them out. Then if you then if we if we're not issuing debt for these projects, then you have arguably the capacity and willingness of the taxpayer then. To take on other projects that you want to do. There's this downtown revitalization is a long road. Um, to 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 uh to fruition. And you're gonna need to go back to the taxpayers, you know, multiple times for different different rounds, but there's also. You know, there's the fire station, there's the town hall, there's Peaslee School, there's roadways, there's the complete streets. You know, this is the whole point of, you know, clearing out capital needs as you have the funds. And then, you know, when you don't have the funds and you need to move forward with your next round of projects. That's when you, again, you go back to the voters and you and you ask for the funding. Um, that's the thought process on the boards and committees, why that's and why these projects are being recommended now. We have limited free cash, as I said in the memo. We got a little over a million dollars. We know we got to do a bunch of small equipment replacements and cruisers and all that stuff. Um, but these medium sized projects like the roof and the engine and the tight tank. These can't be done, you know, with the rolling free cash. And so uh that's why they're being recommended for ARPA. And if you clear those out of the pipeline, it arguably creates capacity to do the thus undefined. Projects that may or may not come down the road. And to Mike Hodges' point, you know, at that point, you know, it goes through the boards and committees, it goes through town meeting and. And if the support is there, it it's there, but these projects have to be done and uh. I'm I'll 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 stop there.
Uh, thank you, John. Uh, Christian.
Um, so as far as the tight tank goes, the um. Uh, it sounds to me like um, I guess I just don't a hundred percent understand exactly what the tank does, and I would like Scott to pop back up. Thank you, Scott. And um. so the, um, we're not allowed to put salt in the, uh, septic tank. So can you just tell us exactly what the tank does and um, environmentally sort of give us an overview of how, uh, the, the good things it does and why, why the state requires us to have it?
Okay, certainly, uh, through the chair. So, uh, floor drains are required to be tied into, um, sanitary sewer systems when sewer is available. We do not have sewer available uh, in this section of Main Street. So the highway garage is on a a septic system. The septic system is under the large paved area that's kind of between the garage and the salt shed on the, on the police station side of the building. When we bring our trucks in, we wash them down inside. Um, you have to, you can't wash a truck outside in the winter. Um, all the, uh, salt oils debris that comes off the truck goes into a floor drain and gets discharged to the septic system. Septic bugs, which are the, uh, the critters that clean the, the sewage, um, so it's safe to be discharged to the ground, do not, um, live happily in an oil laden or s- uh, uh, salt environment. So we're not allowed to discharge like we were back when the building was built in the mid eighties, um, our floor drains to anywhere but a tight tank. Tight tanks are just literally that. Large underground tanks that the water goes into, we would pump them out periodically. We have one tight tank already that is at the mechanics bay. Um, so the drains in the mechanics bay go to a small one thousand gallon tight tank. The proposal here is to have a twenty thousand gallon tight tank installed to capture the floor drains in the wash, in the wash bay.
Okay, and and the difference in this case between spending ARPA money and um, debt money would be wo- would, would you be able to get it faster? Or?
Speed is not a concern, uh, for this project.
Okay.
Not yet. If, if, you know, DEP issues a administrative consent order tomorrow, because they're watching the video tonight, um, speed all of a sudden becomes a priority. But as of me sitting here right now, no, speed is not a, a, a priority.
Right. So I kind of feel like, um, I, well, I did some math and if we were to fund the tight tank, we would still have over, a little bit over two million dollars of the ARPA money left. Am I right about that? So, um, and it is like a, it is a rule thing. It is, the state has said we need this and we should buy it. And we're going to buy it either way, right? Whether we buy it with debt or we buy it with ARPA money. Um, but I do feel like, um, it's, it's less than, uh, considerably less, about half what the fire truck is. And i- if we funded all three things, I feel like we lost an opportunity to have a, a lot of bang for our buck um, with the ARPA money, but I, I don't know. I'm, um, I'm definitely waffling on this one because it isn't as much and it would really be nice to just sort of get it off the list. And it is a necessary thing.
Yeah, I, I look, I look at the tank as something we've got to do eventually. It doesn't seem like, i- it doesn't seem to me that it is the second or third highest priority capital item for the year. Um, it surprises me there aren't any more or any higher priority capital items, but I appreciate it's made its way through the five year cycle. Um, that it, it was originally a larger project for renovation expansion that included the tank and now it's just the tank. Um, we've got to do it eventually. It doesn't seem to me, it does not seem urgent. Either as far as difference between now or town meeting or even this year or next year. Um, I will, I think, leave that to the financial boards and, and the town administrator to determine this year or next year. Um, that's, that's kind of where I sit with it, but I, um, personally, I, I would rather hold on to the four hundred thousand and change, um, for, for projects yet to be determined, if you will. Um, and, uh, and give this to town meeting. If town meeting rejects it and we subsequently in another six months get a, get an angry letter from DEP, then we have the flexibility with ARPA to consider that as we do with um, anything that we want to fund with ARPA where we need to act quickly. Um, you know, this is an opportunity maybe to, to give the taxpayers a little bit of a break and, um, you know, consider whether this year is the right time for this project, again, considering that it has made its, its way through the capital plan. Scott?
So I'll, I'll go backwards based on the comments you just made. So if you want to give the residents some tax relief, then do not incur debt this year on this project and use the ARPA funds. If you want to see projects that have gone through and you want the opinion of town administration and the other boards of committees, you have it right here. These are the projects that have gone through those processes. We know what the priority is of the department directors of town administration and of the boards and committees that are charged with keeping us to our proven financial policies. Tonight has been and should have been a discussion about risk and risk mitigation. We've talked about financial risk and the cost of money and the cost of doing delays. We've talked about schedule risk with the fire engine. If we don't get it, we, by deferring what last year, we, we added another year to the delivery schedule. We've in, we've not run that schedule list, uh, risk, that risk has, has occurred, that issue has occurred. Other elements of risk for this tight tank is a compliance risk and now we, we I don't want to play chicken with the Department of, of environmental protection and, and wait to see if they give us a notice of non-compliance or not. And the ultimate risk and with what's happening here tonight is, is the relationships. You were able to preserve the relationship with the school committee, the superintendent in public education. You have now eroded the relationship of public safety with the deferral of the fire agent.
I disagree with that, Scott. I strongly disagree with that. I'll let you continue.
With Public Works with the same discussion, you have the town bringing ni- needs, critical needs to this board. And you want to game out whether something might happen or might not? This is I, I'm going to stop because I just do not understand the logic behind putting additional tax burden on the residents this year, knowing that there's the, these big ticket items coming and there will be tax burdens on the residents and not reacting to the needs that have come through the proper processes accordance, in accordance with policies and through the proper procedures.
We have a member of the audience with a hand up. Does anyone wish to speak before I recognize that person? Uh, Jason, go ahead and, uh, then Julianne, and then I will, uh, open it up to the audience.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I, I do want to kind of emphasize the viewpoint that, um, these capital projects, as Scott Rogers was just saying, have gone through the process, have been vetted. Um, and in part, um, there's a good faith understanding of all the parties involved, uh, this board, town administration, the various departments and everything, that, uh, we have an agreement and understanding of how the process works. We understand the timeframes when these projects will occur and a reasonable expectation that those projects will move forward. Um, we've suffered a bit of, uh, backlog development in our capital projects, um, over the last couple of years. Uh, we don't have the level of free cash this year that, uh, we, we might have enjoyed in prior years and been able to knock off and, uh, more of the capital, uh, backlog. Um, it just seems to me that with at least one known large scale building project on the very near horizon, uh, the, uh, fire station. The last thing we want to do is to knit together small debt issuances here. Um, while we're presumably trying to line ourselves up to position ourselves as best as possible in terms of, uh, financial stability, financial practices uh, for the bond rating assessment that will take place, uh, for that project. Um, it's, it's very reasonable to me to want to kind of keep the decks clear as much as possible and to get the most favorable outcome for the fire station, uh, uh, debt issuance and, uh, to me, these, um, these discussions this evening have not really understood or served that larger purpose.
Thank you, Jason. Julianne, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I, I just, I just want to comment on, um, on the statement that this is a risk if we don't fund the tight tank right now. It's in the capital improvement plan. It will come before town meeting. It will probably get, get approved. Um, I, I don't see the, you know, the immediate risk. If, if the, if the finance committee and the appropriations committee thought that it could wait a few years, I don't see what, um, funding this, you know, to get a two month head start is going to help at all. So that, that I just wanted to, um, voice my opinion on that one.
Okay. Thank you, Julianne. Um, I did promise that I'd bring the audience members in for a couple of times and then Scott, after that ends, you'll be, uh, be my first, um, Merrily Borden. Welcome again.
Hi, thank you, Merrily Borden, sixty-three Little Pond Road. So I just wanted to, um, go back to the idea of return on investment and I remembered an example that was given that I think is something that, you know, Mitch, as you put together the list for next week, I'm sure this is on it. Sorry for next meeting, um, the idea of investing in solar. And I think particularly literally as you're looking to put a new roof on Procter, it might be a prime opportunity to look at putting solar on the roof. And when we talk about reducing tax burden, if we invest in something that can have long-term return on investment and bring more money into our community, then that money can long-term reduce the tur- tax burden on the, um, citizens. So again, how can we use this money that we didn't know we were going to have to have a greater return and a greater impact on our community financially?
Well said. Thank you very much. Um, let's see. And, uh, George Brinkel? Welcome back.
Uh, hi. Um, George Brinkel, three Little Pond Road. Uh, I just wanted to comment on Julianne said that, uh, the, uh, appropriations committee and finance committee said these projects could wait. And that's actually not the case. This week, the appropriations committee voted unanimously to support these three projects now funding ARPA funds. So I just wanted to clarify that. They, they did not say, let, we, it's okay to wait, we can push this off. We did say that.
Thank you, George. All right, um, George, I'm just going to lower your hand and then we have Lisa Moselli. Lisa? Briefly on the tight tank, please.
Lisa Moselli, thirteen Maple Street. I'm, uh, I want to know how many, um, how many public comments were brought up during the appropriations and the finance committee this time? I have attended several finance committee meetings and they really didn't offer us any, uh, opportunity to speak. Even though we've been said, no, you, you, we really do. I've been there and there's no opportunity to speak. And this is the time when citizens should go or attend with Zoom, but we're not allowed to, to ask questions that have a better understanding of how these decisions were, um, were made. And, um, and without a full
Lisa, I'm going to, Lisa, I'm going to, I'm going to jump in for a second. Um, I appreciate your comments and I think there may be a, a point of discussion at some point as far as more meetings going to hybrid or something like that in the future. But at this point, um, the board is not directing any committee to hold their meetings any way, shape or form. And how they deal with public comment is, is on their own. So point well taken, it, I don't think it's applicable to the specific question that we have in front of the board here. So unless you had something on the tight tank, um, I'll ask you perhaps to take, uh, take that comment to those financial boards and perhaps make recommendations on how they could be more amenable to, uh, public input.
Well, that really, that wasn't really why I said that. It was because there's no discussion of how, how it's so necessary now. And all of a sudden, it's just, it's unanimous. Like, where is the discussion about it is my question? Has that, you talk about process and the process doesn't happen well if there's no discussion by, um, residents as well. And and I think that's, that's the question. It's not how the meetings are handled. It's how do you, how do you come to this process of being done correctly? When there isn't any discussion in the, and there's no public input.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa.
Mr. Chair, I can answer that question. Um, and I know town administration can well as well. So a vast improvement this cycle to both appropriations and financial planning is that the meetings were conducted and televised and live streamed. So not only is there ability for someone to attend in person like they always have and always, uh, is available for, for public input and, and if public comes, there's opportunities for discussion. The fact that they were recorded makes, allows folks to go back and watch those meetings as well. So I would say those meetings are even, um, more open and more available to everybody than they've ever have been. So I think, um, Ms. Moselli is, um, incorrect in her statement.
Yeah, I think boards, I would like to see more boards offer, uh, comment and questions during meetings as we have. Um, that's, again, that's up to the individual boards, um, but I, I do absolutely
Attended all of them myself in person, I can say that anybody that attended in person would have been able to have their comments.
I think, I think se- separate from this discussion, we, we could have certainly a, a lively discussion on the advantages of, uh, of, of allowing people who can't make a meeting at a particular time and place, being able to, uh, offer comments and questions. But, um, a, a point, point well taken that the improvement to televising and recording the meetings is very important. I'm very happy about that. Uh, thank you. Back to the matter at hand. Any comments or questions on the tight tank?
I just have one, one last bit in light, in light of the public comment too. I want to make it clear that I am not against some other projects. The, the issue is, is that ideas that were captured in April, ideas that were captured in June have never been specified. So I have nothing upon which to make a decision. If those projects had been specified in this intervening time, we would have something before us and we could make some comparisons and we can make some priorities. The problem was that work was never done. And so we don't have anything before us to compare. And when it comes forward, like Community Meals did, easy decisions, right? We have something concrete we can make decisions on. But I, I still don't have any details on any of these ideas that would allow us to make a decision and make comparisons to the three projects that we have tonight.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve the release of four hundred seventy-five thousand dollars in ARPA funds to the Public Works Department for the design and installation of a DEP compliant tight tank at the highway garage located at one ninety Main Street.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Jason, seconded by Scott. All those in favor? Uh, Scott?
I.
Julianne?
No.
Kristen?
No.
Jason?
I.
I also vote no. A vote does not, does not cast. Um, I, I, we did skip, uh, a little bit of a discussion on this item as to whether we felt this project should go forward. I, I get the sense from the board that we do feel it should go forward to town meeting. Am I hearing that correctly?
Hmm. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, just, just to be, to be clear, we don't need a vote on that. Um, any, any votes on, on the warrant will come when we approve the warrant. All right, um, that concludes item five from our agenda. Um, next item up on our agenda is discussion regarding the town administrator transition process. Um, uh, John and, and members of the board, as members of the board know, um, John has, uh, has signed a contract to, um, to become the town manager in another town, the town of Foxborough. Um, and, uh, just prior to this meeting, he did email the board a resignation letter. Um, the board does not need to vote to approve that resignation The board does not need to vote to approve that resignation letter because the the rules of his contractors, he just needs to give us, give us thirty days notice, which he has and then some. And John, in your letter, you said that your last date of employment would be, I believe you said, April seventh. And but you'd be taking that last week as a vacation week, although you did imply that you'd be working during your.
Well, the whole point was not to tell people that I'd be around and working because I need to clean the office and I wanna leave things orderly for whoever comes behind me. So. I do have that week. My last effective day of working is gonna be March thirty first and then. If I need a couple of days to finish making sure all the loose ends are tied up, I will, but I'll be taking vacation that week. So. Effectively, March thirty first will be my last working day.
John, thank you.
Can't lock me out of the building yet. I got one more week while I still should have access so I could finish cleaning things up. Sure, that's.
Sure, un- understood. Tonight's not the night, but then the the time will come where we will, we will thank you. For all the years of service to the town of Northborough. I asked for this item to to be on the agenda so we could sort of talk a little bit about through, through the process of selecting a new administrator. This is something that town has not done for a number of years. No members of the board were on the board the last time. That that administrator was chosen, either John or any predecessor. I've been through it once in another community, not while I was on the board. I served on a town administrator search committee, probably twenty years ago. And. Generally speaking, the first step in a process is to bring somebody on to guide us through it, particularly because we're not experts in the process. So, John, I I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but I I, you and I had talked about. You getting some, some prices or some options on releasing an RFP for a consultant that can help us through this.
Yeah, so there's a, there's a couple of, I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, go ahead.
There's a couple of. Consultants that do this in mass. And we've worked with one of them in the past, but there's no allegiance to anybody. So the thought process is if you're going to go out. You issue an RFP to hire a consulting firm, draft up. Basically what you're looking for in terms of those services. I do have several examples. I just didn't wanna jam up your. Your. Meeting packet with. Work product. I'm happy to forward that stuff along so you could take a look at it, but decide what the. What the services are that the town would be seeking. In general, I mean, it can range anywhere from ten to twenty thousand dollars to do a, an executive level search. I think they probably. You know, closer around about the fifteen thousand dollar range. But again, it depends on, on exactly what process the board envisions. And and how much of stuff you the town would do versus the the consultant. But. If you're gonna go outside, the first step would be put an RFP together, go through the selection process for a consultant. To then, then the consultant, when they come on, will guide you through the balance of the process. They'll help you draft a community profile. They'll do community input sessions. Surveys, whatever the town envisions for input for the process. So again, there's a little bit of. Variation in terms of the cost depending on. How expansive you want that, you know, that input to be in what form you'd like it to take, but. But that's generally the, that's generally the process.
Thank you. A little bit more on on details of that is that prior to John's departure, we will need to choose an interim. And we will have that discussion at a meeting certainly before the end of March. And typically, what happens is that the consultant also helps us update the job description. And help us determine an appropriate salary to advertise based upon our input and. Us determining characteristics of, of the type of person and experience. That we might be looking for in an administrator. And then if we choose to go, go forward with that, we would, we would form a search committee. Which would oversee the collection of resumes that first come in. That search committee would do. A screening interview of the candidates they felt that would be potential candidates to move forward to the board. That screening committee is not the Board of Selectmen, but could contain at at most two members of the board. So it's not a quorum of the Board of Selectmen. And that screening committee or search committee would then forward some number of names, usually it's around three. To the board and then the board would conduct public interviews of those candidates and make a, make a selection. There are a few variations and options in in that process. We're not ready to sort of make any decisions tonight, but I I do think it's a good idea for us to go ahead and and issue the RFP for a consultant. Who can help us make sure that we we do this right. And thoroughly and legally and everything else. Don't know if there are any, any thoughts from the board? Scott?
And so in terms of John, Becca, I mean. That's, that's the way you've seen it happen in other towns. That's what you would advise us to proceed in this case. Is to hire a consultant.
If you're going to look outside of the town, yes, then that's what you would do.
Okay, thank you.
And sometimes you go through that process and then you decide not to. Go out, so we, you know, we. I think we need, we need some professional guidance to even make that decision. But in all likelihood, my preference is to look outside and inside. The town, not to exclude anybody. Julianne?
I really like the idea of getting a consultant. It takes the, the, you know, the emotion out of the whole process and. You know, this person, if this person can help us. Get. Community input in an efficient way and know how to do that. Well, I, I think that's. A great idea.
Another aspect of this that the consultant can guide us through is timing. We couldn't act as fast as possible and maybe have somebody in, you know, in place in a couple of months. Or we can be a little bit more deliberate. There's the practicality of an election in May that will change since, you know, we had an announcement from two members of this board. That they wouldn't be continuing. Two of five members of this board will be new after. Beginning of May. Pros and cons of, of waiting for some actions until then so that a full permanent board. Can make some decisions. But again, I I'm not. Suggesting anything specific in timing that way, but the consultant will be able to help us through that. Not hearing anybody express opposition to issuing the RFP. Is there anyone has a concern with that? We don't need to vote on that.
I say go with it.
All right, John, if I I can, I can help you with this if you.
Yeah, do you want me to? Do you want me to draft something for your consideration at your next meeting?
Sure. I. Honestly, my preference is to draft it and issue it so that we can keep this moving. My concern is we wait until the next meeting. And issue it and wait until the next meeting and then all of a sudden it's the middle of March. Before we've even hired, brought somebody on board to help us with it.
Okay.
If if the board is comfortable, you know, myself and Julian as vice chair, giving a, you know, a final okay to an RFP. Not the hiring process. I, you know, hopefully we, you know, we as a board can make that determination in total. Now, Scott, you had your hand up?
I would be more comfortable that the draft RFP come before the board for review at our next meeting.
Thoughts? A tie between Kristin and Jason ladies first. Kristin?
Um. So is John writing the draft? Of the RFP? He is, right?
Yeah, he's offered to do so.
I I can put something together for you. Really what it comes down to is just making sure where the expenses will stack up is how much. For in some towns, they, they hold an event where the consultant. Runs each of the applicants through a general community where anybody can call in and ask questions. That's an additional expense. And I guess we could try to structure the. RFP to ask the price proposal to kind of lay those things out. It would be. Again, you. It it really just, it depends. There's standard things that will occur in this process that pretty routine. But some towns go way out with a lot of elaborate stuff. Others hold it very, you know, tight. I can just tell you like. Foxborough, it was just the, you know, the screening committee and the board. And they captured a couple of community, pretty standard to have a community forum where people generally talk about the characteristics and the things that they're looking for. Beyond that, if you start adding things in, it just, you know, it it adds some, some expense. I just wanna make sure that. I don't wanna speak for the board in terms of what process, the extent of the process that you're envisioning.
Oh, okay. Well, I would be comfortable with you just. Writing and I don't think I'd need to see it ahead of time.
My, my sense is it would be sort of the common process and I'm sure there would be an hourly rate for. Things above and beyond. And if we did feel it necessary as a board to do something above and beyond, then we would know what that expense would entail. You know, the thoughts, Julian?
Well, to Scott's request, um, could we have a quick meeting next Monday and and look over the RFP? I think there's a real time, time constraint here.
I think next Monday is President's Day. Is that a?
Yes.
Holiday for town hall?
Yes.
I'm not available.
I mean, I'm not. Totally opposed to, to waiting on it. But there is. A risk of slowing down a bit. Honestly, if if. Any member of the board feels that they'd want to review. That at a board meeting, that's how I'm inclined.
Perhaps I can offer a compromise, Mister Chairman. But I, why don't we draft it, send it out to the board? And then the board can decide if they wanna hold a meeting to discuss it further or if it's by default. You know, it's fine.
I'm, I'm okay with that. Scott, does that address your?
Yeah, thank you. That'd be great.
Okay, Jason?
Obviously, we can't deliberate, as you all know, but just.
Right, right.
So people have some comfort level of seeing what it looks like.
Simply indicate whether you would prefer to have a meeting.
That's the only question is, do you feel like we need a meeting to discuss this?
Right.
That's the only question.
Purely an administrative question.
Yep. And then we'll go ahead and if if anybody wants a meeting, we'll go ahead and schedule that for as quickly as we we can. At that point, and it would be most likely a one topic meeting. Is everyone's good with that? Okay, thank you, John, for offering that, that suggestion. That makes a lot of sense. Does anybody else have any other? Items to talk about on the discussion regarding the town administrator transition process item? Okay, seeing none, we will move along. Discussion regarding residential electric aggregation program. Becca, I understand you're the, the local expert on this. Thank you very much for the information you you submitted in our packet. Take, take it away.
Sure. So I'm, I'm gonna do my best to be brief, yet informative. There's a lengthy memo in your packet. Along with a very detailed guide from the Department of Energy Resources, DOE. Essentially explaining the process of implementing a municipal aggregation program. So I would encourage folks at home who maybe are not as familiar with the program to take a look at that guide. Because it really does walk you through fairly detailed steps start to finish. By way of background, just so everybody has an understanding of how we got to where we are. In the late nineties, the state essentially passed. An act, an energy restructuring act. That allowed municipalities to aggregate their consumers' electric load. So what that means basically is. Purchase electricity in bulk at lower rates on behalf of residents in any community. This provides some stability in. The rates, as you know, basic rates under the utility companies fluctuate twice a year. They're very volatile. They're subject to, to markets overseas, et cetera. And so this, this aggregation program is, is a means by which communities can control the costs. Of the supply of electricity for their residents. Now, if you look at your bill, there's, there's two rates. Essentially, there's a supply rate and a delivery rate. This program impacts the supply rate. So essentially where your energy is coming from. It does not impact your delivery rate. That is a rate that's set by the utility company. That's the cost of maintaining the infrastructure essentially that brings your electricity into your home. So that's, that's not impacted by this program. So we're looking at implementing a program to purchase. Electricity, the supply of electricity for, for residents. In twenty sixteen, Northborough began this process. The first step is getting the legislative bodies approval. So in our case, that is town meeting. In April of twenty sixteen. Electric aggregation went before town meeting in Northborough and it did pass. That vote is still valid. So at this point, we are, we are sort of surpassed the first hurdle. The next step would be for the board. To issue an RFP. Seeking consulting services to assist us with developing an aggregation plan. So the way that. That aggregation gets implemented is that communities develop a detailed plan. That has to adhere to DPU and DOE standards. And ultimately, it has to go before the DPU to get approval before the community can actually. Get bids for electricity rates and implement a program. So the next step in the process is to to issue the RFP. To get some responses. And for the board to, to execute a contract, to move forward with a consultant and begin the development of the plan. So I'll stop there and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Julianne?
So, so one of the good things about doing this besides hopefully stabilizing. Our electric bills is that the town can. Require that a certain amount of this. And energy is from renewable resources, correct? So, like, what, what would be the cap on that? Like, what's the average that a town would say we want? It would it thirty percent, forty percent?
So that's sort of part of the development of the plan is, is establishing. What percentage of the electricity supply do you want to be generated from renewable sources? There is a, there is a minimum requirement. That electricity suppliers have to adhere to. That's a state requirement. I think it's in the twenty percent. I I'm not, I'm not positive on the number, but. You know, the board can in developing the plan say, you know. Just, we want fifty percent of the electricity to come from renewable sources as, as part of the plan. You know, the, the. The caveat to that is typically, the more renewable sources of energy that you have, the more expensive it costs. So, you know, other, some communities have done two rates, so a base rate with a, a, a percentage of electricity from renewable sources. And then what they call a green energy rate, which essentially is a little bit more expensive. But it guarantees that a higher percentage of the electricity is being. Generated by renewable sources. So it gives residents the option if they. You know, would like to know that the energy is coming from renewable sources and they wanna pay a little bit of a premium for that, they can do that. So it sort of balances the cost savings with the, the sort of. Environmental. Incentive, if that makes sense.
So, so I don't understand. Does the town decide as a whole that we want? Thirty percent of the, the energy to be renewable or does each individual? Customer do that?
So the board would, would be. With town staff, the board and the consultant would be developing this plan. The plan will establish all the different options that residents would have. After the energy. After the electricity supply is. Um, after the energy, after the electricity supply is, uh, the bids are received. So you, you put together essentially what is an IFB with a consultant and you say, okay, we want to offer residents. A rate that has fifty percent of RECs, renewable energy certificates, and then we want an additional rate that has seventy-five percent of RECs. Um, and, um, you know, we want to get prices for those two options. And then when the plan is implemented as part of the education and outreach process that's required. As implement, implementing the plan, we would educate residents about, okay, these are your options. This is what it means. You can pay a little bit less and get some renewable energy, or you can pay a little bit more and get. A higher percentage of renewable energy. So it gives each individual resident the option to choose. Whether or not they want to pay a little more, or they want to ultimately save a little bit of money and, and go for the lower rate. And these are, you know. Nothing is set in stone, you know, part of bringing a consultant on board is sort of hearing their expertise and what's worked and what hasn't worked in other communities. Everybody does it a little bit differently. It, it often depends on the goals of the community, you know, if, um. If, if renewable energy and, and the environment is of. High import to a community, then you may see them offering, um, rates that have hi- a higher percentage of, of RECs, of renewable energy certificates.
Thank you.
I answered a question?
Yeah, can I just ask one more real quick one? Do you happen to know, okay, so now that. Our, our rates have gone up so much, part of it is the war, um. It, are, are the customers who opted for renewables, are they doing better than?
It depends on town and it depends on the plan. Um, you know, going out to bid for energy rates is. It's also impacted by all the same things that basic rates are impacted by, you know, like. Those energy suppliers are going to be impacted by the same things that national grid is impacted by. So a lot of. You know, bringing a consultant on board is sort of hearing their expertise about what is the market doing, what's the timing of the market? Because, you know, when I, when I worked in Grafton, we implemented an aggregation plan. And we, we got the plan approved by DPU. And immediately following the approval, the consultant we had on board said, you know what, I think you should wait four weeks before we put the bid out. Because the market is a little bit volatile right now, and we think that if you wait a little bit longer, you might get better rates. And so a lot of it is really you're relying on the consultant and their expertise in the energy market. It's sort of high risk, high reward, right? Um. You can't predict these things.
I attended, sorry, I attended, um, a talk on this topic at the MMA conference last month. Um, and all of the towns that had been doing it for many, many years did experience the occasional moment, uh, a few months at a time. Where national grids rates were actually a little bit less than the rate that, um, that the town had bid at just due to bidding timing. And the length of contracts that were bid out, but all of them had said the vast majority of time. They were saving money, sometimes a lot of money. I think it was the town manager of Auburn gave a, uh, a, a story of where they went out to bid. And, um, the rates came in really, really high unexpectedly, so they just sort of didn't take any of those. They, they did a shorter term bid. To get by the high rate period and then things got a lot better after that. Um, and on, on the topic of the renewables, there are a number of different ways of structuring it. Uh, some towns do it, um, where the default rate is the higher. Uh, renewable energy rate, so maybe the default is seventy-five percent renewable. And then, um, a homeowner can opt for something a little bit lower of renewable to save a little bit of money. There are a lot of options. That, um, that we can walk through, um, and, uh, and you can change those over time. You're not locked in on, on those. Some communities, when the prices went up, changed their default to a lower amount of renewal because of the high cost. And then once the prices drop again, um, that they, they may increase the renewable percentage. There's a lot of, a lot of ways to do it. Uh, any other questions? Scott?
Yeah, Becca, thanks for putting that all together and, and doing the research. Um, I know that the, the energy guide has some warnings. About some of the history with the suppliers that, you know, didn't turn out to be solvent, right? And ran into troubles and went underwater. In your, in your research, did you find any criteria in which a resident right now could, um. Be assisted in evaluating alternate suppliers? Cause that is a choice to everybody right now, right? We could individually go and, and get, have you seen any guidance on that, that, that helps, uh, a, a resident choose between some of these alternate suppliers?
No, and I really hesitate to put any advice out there into the ether, you know, the. Those plans come with a lot of caveats and you have to pay very, very close attention to what you're signing up for. That's one of the benefits to municipal aggregation is theoretically. You, you're purchasing with a, a, a large pool and you have people who you can hold accountable, right? That's us and you, at the end of the day, if things go south. Um, you know, we're sort of expected to, to be looking out for the residents' best interest and if you go. If you go at it alone with, with a supplier, competitive supplier, you know, you, you. You, you don't have that same safety net or support system. And I, and I think that that's why you've seen a lot of communities in the last. You know, fi- five to ten years have, you know, there's been a strong push towards. You know, community aggregation, municipal aggregation for that reason.
Okay, and that makes sense. I'm looking at the, the part of the report right now, or, or the, the link that, you know, that in terms of. Comparing, um, plans that, that, uh. That for residents, it's only fifteen percent of individual residents have gone with a competitive supplier and it looks like, uh, more. More or, or taking advantage of a municipal aggregation. Okay, thank you for that.
Any other, uh, John?
Yeah, just because it's out there, um, I'm the one that brought that forward to town meeting. To get the authorization approved. And if somebody's wondering, well, why didn't we move forward? Uh, at that time, and I know I provided the board with a memo with some background, but at that point in time, we were entering a period of very low rates. And many of the communities that had entered into these aggregation contracts, their, their contracts were underwater. And, uh, several of the suppliers weren't able to honor the contracts. Basically, the market was such that every consultant that I had spoken to said, don't do it, don't do it now, wait. And so that's why we hadn't proceeded. You have to take a long view of these things, you know, we're not going to jump into the market and save a ton of money right now. Because the market is very high. Uh, so what, what the, the, and it takes DPU two years. To approve the aggregation and that's something that is a little bit disheartening as well. So there were a combination, and one of the reasons they did that is because this initial round of these. Uh, there were a lot of people, a lot of contracts that were, were problematic. And so DPU sort of, uh, polished up a lot of their oversight and regulation, so things have gotten better. But I just want to caution people, you know, this is a worthwhile endeavor, but you got to view it in the long term. There will be times. When you get, if you, if you jump in at the market when it's high. Then, you know, you're going to have to ride that out. In the long term, it provides stability and, and predictability, which is a good thing. But this isn't, this isn't a short-term fix and we're still looking at, you know. Twelve to, you know, twenty-four months potentially for DPU to approve all this. But it's a worthwhile endeavor, but I just want people to realize it was not a good situation. We were in a very extended, uh, extended period. Of historically low energy rates. And there was no incentive to, to move into the market at that point, and at least initially after we got the approval. Uh, we were advised not to. So, you know, fast forward to today, you know, we went through the pandemic and, and so forth. It's definitely something that makes sense, but I just want to temper expectations that. This is a program that you enter into and you do it for the long run and there will be significant, you know, fluctuations. So just. Just a caveat, but I just want people to understand why we got the authorization and then ultimately didn't pull the trigger. It's because the market wasn't supportive at the, at the time, so, um, but we certainly should move forward now.
Um, and Becca, it looks like the next step is to the issue solicitation for an energy broker. Step in here. Is there any action that the board needs to take to start that process?
Not necessarily. You're blessing to, to put that on the street. Um, the RFP has been drafted. There was a copy of the draft in your packet. Um, it's pretty straightforward. Um, you know, we're looking for somebody with experience in the municipal market. Frankly, you can go on the DPU's website and, and view the plans from all the communities that have already approved. Plans for aggregation and you can see the consultants that are working with those communities. There's only a handful of them. Um, and it's, you know, the handful of sort of saturated the market. So, um, I have a, a pretty good idea of who, who's going to submit and, um. You know, I think at this point we'll put it on the street, get some proposals, evaluate them, bring them back to the board for. For ratification and then we'll, we'll start the process of, uh, putting together the plan, which i- is heavily. Involved the board and the community. Um, there's a lot of community input that's required as part of the DOE and DPU process. So people will be hearing more, um, as we move forward.
Thank you. Um, board, we don't, we don't need to vote. Board ready to ask Becca to go ahead and with that process? Okay, good. Sounds like that's what we'll do. Thank you very, very much again for the, uh, for the research that Becca. That item concluded. Now we get to accept a Stanton Foundation Grant Award for the design phase of the proposed dog park.
I'm happy to speak to that, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like. So this is a real happy event. Lori, uh, uh, Lori Connors had submitted a grant to the Stanton Foundation, so we received a twenty-five thousand dollar grant. To allow us to finish the, um, design development, uh, for the, uh, proposed dog park. A real positive sign for this is that the Stanton Foundation, we're hopeful, will be a source of upwards of, you know. Uh, maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars of, of potential grant funding for the dog park that, uh, that we're pursuing. And generally speaking, if they give you, you know, this smaller grant to move forward with the design. It means they're, they're very interested in funding the next round as well. So. Uh, before you tonight is just in order for us to, eh, expend those funds, the board needs to accept them for the purposes, uh, intended. And then, um, and then Scott, uh, Sharp and Tier working with Lori will move forward with the full design development for the, uh, dog park.
So we do need to vote on that, correct, John?
Yes, you need to vote to accept them for the purposes that of, of the, uh, of the grant.
Okay, I did not catch that it, it was not in the, uh, the, the proposed motions for tonight. Um, so. We both missed that one, um, apologies. Um, so if somebody, yeah, eh, anyone would like to make a motion to. Accept the Stanton Foundation Grant Award for the design phase of the proposed dog park, that would be appreciated.
So moved. Or would you like a total?
No, just a so moved, I think, does it?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Julianne, seconded by Scott. Um, all those in favor, uh, Scott?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
I also vote aye, vote is unanimous in favor. We have accepted the grant award. Thank you very much. Uh, next up, we have, uh, reappointment of Terry Underwood to the Cultural Council. Um, as described in the packet, this is off-cycle based on how the Cultural Council, uh, works and, um, so. That's why this is tonight as opposed to with the annual reappointments. Um, John, is there anything else that, uh, that you wanted to add? To that? Okay, very good. Um, anybody have any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to reappoint Terry Underwood. To the Cultural Council for a three-year term to expire on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-sixth.
Second.
Motion made by Julianne, seconded by Kristen and then Scott. Um, I will, a- as far as discussion, I will add that the Cultural Council has a very unique process. Of, uh, term limits that don't apply. I don't think to any other municipal board. The way that it works is once a member has served for six consecutive years, they must. Uh, they can't seek reappointment for at least one more year. That's not applying obviously to Terry tonight. But I do believe there are two or three members that are, are kind of hitting that wall, uh, within the next few months. And there is a requirement, um, under the state rules. That you have to have at least five members on your local cultural council to receive grant funding from the state. So, um, I will encourage any members of the audience that are still watching tonight, as well as any members of the board that know anybody that might want to serve on our. Truly excellent cultural council. Um, please fill out an application so we can, um, get folks appointed before. Uh, we drop below the five threshold. Um, I'll, I'll remind people of that as many times as it is necessary until. Until we, we get the right number up on that board again, and we can have a very large board. I forget what the ca- the maximum capacity, it's like seventeen or thirty or something like that. It's a, it's a big number. So if you're worried about one person getting it and up, just, just go ahead and apply.
Yeah, there's, there's at least four open positions, so yeah, get, get as many applications as possible.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Um, all right. Uh, oh, sorry, we have to vote. Uh, let's see, Scott, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Julianne?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
I also vote aye, vote is unanimous in favor. Congratulations and thank you, Terry. Reports, let's see. Uh, Kristen, do you have any reports tonight?
Yes. I do. Um, quick one, promise. Um, at our last meeting, we talked about making the vacancies on the, um, town boards and committees easier to find and. Now it's right there on the website on the right-hand side, right under, um, and employment opportunities, I think. Anyway, it's easy to find. So thanks for everybody who worked on that. Um, the recent earthquake in Turkey and Syria has been on everyone's minds. Um, I know I was wondering what I can do, but then I got this email from the, uh, Mary Ellen Duggan in the school department there. Um, and it's on the Parentsware app too. They're collecting blankets, tents, sleeping bags, pocket warmers, diapers, any size. Powdered baby formulas, dry baby food items, baby bottles and flashlights without batteries. Um, if you're able to donate any of those items, you can drop them off at any of the schools or the library this week in Northborough. And, um, on Friday, they'll take them to the Turkish consulate for delivery and Turkish Airlines is going to fly them to Turkey. So that's a really nice thing to be able to help out with. Um, Kindness Week is coming up. Don't miss the fun community affairs events, um, the committee has planned. Um, and there's, you can have coffee with either of the two chiefs, Chief Laver, Chief Parenti. You can have coffee with Becca, you can have coffee with Mitch, all the cool Northborough celebrities. So, um, you can find details at their website or their Facebook page. If you just Google Northborough Community Affairs Committee, it'll come up. And, um, quick quote. Um, in honor of Valentine's Day tomorrow, love is like the sea. It's a moving thing, but still in all, it takes its shape from the shore it meets. And it's different with every shore. That's by Zora Neale Hurston. And that ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Jason, do you have any reports tonight?
Uh, no report tonight, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Julianne, any reports?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so back to Cultural Council, um. I, I would like to, um, report that I attended their last meeting and they are discussing a spring. Um, public art project again for Ellsworth McAfee. I know a lot of people enjoyed it last year and you can look forward to it happening again this year. And moving on to summer, they have set a date for their culture fest, which will be June tenth. Um, and again, just a pitch for if you have any interest in the arts and culture scene in Northborough. Um, or just want to be part of a really fun, vibrant. Committee, um, look into, come to a meeting of the Cultural Council. Um, secondly, I am the liaison to the White Cliffs Committee and they made their decision about which proposal for the building. They thought was most viable for the mansion. Um, they did decide to, to, um, promote Metro West, which is the proposal that involves. Affordable housing on the property. Um, and there. So I just want to explain that their parameters for making this decision was limited to the proposals that they received from the RFP. Um, a- and, and this process is not done, it will continue where there will be more opportunity for discussion. So that's the update on that right now. Um, and the. Um, and the, I just like to ask again that. Um, you know, we are, you know, Scott, you mentioned, we haven't really discussed. Um, specifics of ARPA distribution, but I, I. Continue to feel that we need some information about the buildings and I know that there's a. Uh, you know, a, a study that's going to be done. If we can help fund that and get that done quickly, or if there's a preliminary thing. Or a walkthrough like we do with the schools, I think that this would be very valuable information about. Um, eh, when we come to decide on, on the remainder of the ARPA funds. And, um, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Julianne. Scott, do you have any reports tonight?
Uh, just a quick update on groundwater advisory committees. So the planned public input session, part of the public hearing on the proposed bylaw changes. Uh, was continued until the twenty-first of February. Um, that language probably, uh, will, will be in, uh, will be very solid. I guess a question to us is whether we want to review that outside of our normal review of other warrant articles. If we want to take up that topic, uh, individually. I'm kind of asking a question during the report, but I mean, so there's an opportunity, uh, that if we wanted to discuss that, we could put that on the agenda. If not, it'll just come forward to us in the, uh, in the warrant articles. I will be individually, uh, participating in that public, uh, hearing, uh, when it occurs.
I would say if, if any member, um, wants an agenda item on, on reviewing any proposed bylaw, just. You know, let me know. We'll have the opportunity when we review the warrant, but if someone wants something, uh, different or earlier, just, I would say, send myself and John an email. Would be helpful.
Okay. That answers my report.
Thank you very much. Um, other than what was mentioned by other members, the only thing that I would like to add is. Um, two weeks ago on January thirtieth, I had the honor of speaking in front of, uh, three scout, uh, packs or groups. Or I, I forget exactly what their terminology is for the, for the, mostly for the Weeblow level. Um. And I was asked to speak about what it is to be, uh, a member of the select board and some of the issues facing the town. And I would say they were a fantastic audience, uh, mostly ten-year-olds plus or minus. Um, they asked amazing questions about White Cliffs, really detailed questions about the fire station project. Uh, even getting into some somewhat obscure, uh, items that I suspect they may have heard about from their parents. Such as plowing of private wa- roads and, and, uh, uh, how much the, the fees are. Um, they were really a great group. I, I could have spoken with them for a lot longer than, uh, than the time was allocated, but it was, it was a really fun event. And I want to thank, uh, Ricky Bazant, who, um, helped organize that and invited me to do that. Um, if anyone else gets an opportunity to do something like that in the future, please, uh, take advantage and that ends my report. Um, is there any other business for the board this evening?
Mister Chairman, if I may, uh, we do have an executive session scheduled this evening. Um, there's nothing to vote on. It was general update. Given the hour, my recommendation would be to, to hold it to your next meeting, if that's acceptable to the board.
Any thoughts?
That is acceptable to.
Okay, I don't, I don't hear any raging objection to that, so, um. All right, uh, so we will, we will dispense. When it comes time, we do have one more slot for public comment. If anyone in the audience wishes to, uh, speak to anything, um, whether it was on our agenda or not. Uh, Kelly Goodnet, we usually don't have people at the, this last one, but, but we do. Kelly, um, bringing you in.
Hi, thank you so much. Oh, I know how it is to have those last minute audience sharing, so I, I couldn't resist. Um, I just wanted to thank you all very much for approving the ARPA funding for the Proctor roof. Um, you've made a lot of Proctor families very happy about that and you've also made, um. The school committee very happy in the school district. So thank you very much. I appreciate that. And then the only other thing I was going to mention, and I wasn't going to mention it until Julianne said it in her report, was about White Clough. Is, um, I can't wait to hear more about it. Um, the affordable housing thing, I know. That could definitely impact the schools, so I hope there's going to be some more, um, information about that also. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Kelly. Um, I anticipate that, um, our next meeting will include a discussion item on, on White Cliffs with a presentation. Um, by, by that board. Um, once that gets ironed out, we'll, we'll know that with certainty. We might be there until late hour again, based on the things that I'm hearing on that project. Um, there being no other items and our decision to dispense with the executive session of this evening. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Jason, seconded by Scott to adjourn. Um, all those in favor, uh, Julianne?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. We are adjourned ten thirty.